All right, as we get ready tonight, those wishing to address the board during public comments during our public comment agenda item 3.02 must turn in a public comment form. Prior to the start of the meeting at five o'clock, which is just in a second here, any form submitted after the session has started will be. Held for the next meeting to address the board at that time. Does anybody have any forms they need to turn in for public comment or working on them real quick? No, just want to make sure we have that option before we get going here. All right, that said, I'll wait a few more seconds because my, oh, there we go. Now it's five o'clock. All right. You ready, Jesse? Okay, it is 5:00 PM on Monday, September 25th, 2023. This is a regular board meeting for the Monroe School District. Present are Directors Barnes, Director Ed. Director Ed Scorm, Director Whitfield, Student Representatives Laura Wittenberg and Sophia is not with us tonight. So you know, Sophia is coming. Okay, Sophia is not in attendance. Superintendent Sean Woodward, District Leadership Team members and school district staff, as well as members of the community. President Bumpus will not be in attendance this evening, and I Vice President Director Campbell will be facilitating the meeting in President Bumpus's absence. Members of the public can log into the regular board meeting using the Zoom link on the Board Docs website. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, welcome to tonight's meeting. We are happy to have you join us. All comments during tonight's meeting are audio recorded and will be available online. On our website, and this is addition, in addition to the written minutes. Please understand that while it may appear the board is moving quickly on important matters. There have been previous discussions on these issues either in earlier meetings or in board workshops, which are also open public meetings. Each director has had ample time to study the issues, ask appropriate questions, and obtain satisfactory answers from the superintendent, his staff, or through outside research. Those wishing to address the board during public comments must turn in a public comment form prior to the start of the meeting at five o'clock. PM, any form submitted after the meeting has started will be held for the next meeting to address the board at that time. All right, moving on to agenda item 1.03 approval of agenda. Is there a motion to approve? Sorry, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I motion to make an amendment to this agenda for tonight. I would like to add in 2.04 kindness week resolution.
All right, there is a motion to amend the agenda adding to the presentation section, right?
Yes.
That would be 2.04 presentation for kindness week resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's a motion, a second discussion. All right, is a motion, a second to add item 2.04 to kindness week resolution. On favor, your hand. All right, that is added to the agenda. All right, now is there a motion to accept the agenda with the with the addition?
As I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the agenda dated September 25th, 2023 as amended.
Second.
Second.
On favor is your hand. All right, accept the agenda with the amendment. All right, moving on to agenda item 2.01. We'll go ahead and jump into our presentations, and that begins us off with the University of Washington and Monroe High School demonstration. Site, and I believe Brett Willie is going to be kicking it off. I also have Noah Wallace. That's the next page. Oh, here we go. Thank you. Holly, first, for our first presentation, see Holly's got this already on here. Thank you so much. This evening, agenda 2.01. Principal of Monroe High School Brett Willie, Assistant Principal Monroe High School Noah Wallace, and demonstration site project lead. And the PDU Education Specialist with the University of Washington, Rena Marie Leon Guerrero. This presentation will discuss the Monroe School District and University of Washington Inclusionary Practices Professional Development Project. Take it away, guys.
Yes, thank you for the introduction and having us here. My name is Rena Marie Leon Guerrero, and I'm the project lead for the demonstration sites, the UW-Hearing Center. Yes, I think what we do, our practice, we can do introductions. Well, I'll give a little bit of overview to capture what the demonstration sites project is in 2019. OSPI was awarded money looking at as a statewide moving our. Yeah, moving our state along in inclusive practices. Washington State ranked 44th in our nation, so the bottom 10 for inclusive practices across. Our nation currently we sit at 42, so there's some move movement there, but still a ways, a ways to go. Where we are now is we have 15 schools that have been identified as inclusion demonstration sites, and we have. Sites across our state really looking at rural sites, urban sites, small school districts and large school districts as well. And currently our goals are really centering racial equity in looking at the intersectionality with disability. Engaging families as decision makers and co-designers early on, not as an afterthought in this progress. Including student voice and opportunities for self advocacy and prioritizing the inclusion of students with significant disabilities. Extensive support needs. So looking at those individuals that would be served in our LRE3. And to truly realize our goal of including each and every student. Right here, I'll share with you, this is an infographic of our inclusionary practices project. Currently, we are transitioning, making an evolution to the inclusionary practices Technical Assistance Network. So more to come on that. On the fall, but and you can look at those QR codes to learn more about the inclusionary practices project as well as inclusionary practices. Demonstration sites here, but for our purposes today, I'll have everybody focus on that. Second row there and the third row of looking at our statewide professional developments. What we realize. In this project and why we're moving to Technical Assistance Network is because a project maybe signifies it's something we do and we're done with. And we know that's not true in this work, that this network needs to grow and continue and move forward. We also recognize that we need to engage all our partners at every level. So I'm, and we'll be talking about. Demonstration sites, but we also know that we are looking at our leadership, our superintendent leadership, principal leadership, our WEA, looking at. Teacher, teacher involvement, educator involvement, our family engagement collaborative, which is comprised of four separate. Entities for our family and student in engagement as well. So we're looking at building that network out that we really have to have partnership from all all levels. And that we are working together and not against each other as well, that we are collaborating and really leveraging all those those resources. And then where we sit in three up there is the demonstration sites. And so what we've been tasked with is often people say. Yes, on paper, I understand that. I read that. I understand that, but we would just like to see it. We'd like to see it to see when we talk about. Inclusionary practices, what does that mean and what does that look like? And that looks very different at from school site to school site. And so. It's been wonderful in this partnership to have Hidden River and now Monroe School District serving as exemplary demonstration sites. And with with that, I'll turn it over to David, Noah, and Brett to talk a little bit more about Monroe's involvement.
Yeah, and I think the important thing to recognize here is while Monroe High School and Hidden River Middle School. Have been identified as demonstration sites. This work isn't only, it's not just going on at those two schools. We've, over the last nine years, we've been building out our inclusive practices throughout the system. So all of our elementary schools. Both of our middle schools, the high school have all been building up that work. And so I just want to make sure that we're. We have some good, they both Monroe High School and Hidden River have opened up their schools and their practice to the outside folks coming in. But we have good work going on everywhere. And so a couple of examples of that. We've been doing inclusive practices and co-teaching district-wide kindergarten through high school for the last nine years. When, when I first came into the district, our least restrictive environment that LRE that Rena Marie was talking about. Our students who were served with IP's were primarily being served separately, and so they would have pull out services. To get their services, and so they would have to leave their general education environments. Over the last nine years, we've really flipped that in our district, and so. The vast majority of our students are having the majority of their day or 80 to 100% of their day in that general education environment. That's a point of. Of pride, I think, for all of our schools. That comes from the building leadership, embrace network and supporting it with their staffs. It doesn't just happen with the special education teachers or the general education teachers. It's the whole community. So. Hidden Rivers was first identified as a demonstration site in 2019. But this work also is really just, it's kind of threaded throughout everything we do. So with a lot of our work with professional learning communities. When teams are having their collaborative teams, we have special education teachers that are part of that planning with with the general education teachers. So. Students with who are served with IP's are also best part of the planning is how are we going to best support those students? In that general education environment. Some of the things that Brett will probably talk about a little bit more, the big. Technical shifts that really was required at both middle schools as well as the high school was really reworking that master schedule. To. Previously, there was always sections where students were having to to not be in a general education. They would just have a separate reading or a separate writing or separate math class. And so to to switch that, the building principals really had to completely blow up their master schedules and start from scratch. And that that was especially at the high school level. That's a huge lift for Brett, his team, and all the entire school staff. So that's just a. A point of pride, I think, for for what what they've done. Some of the things that we are still kind, we're continuing to build out in our district is also the addition of. Our transitional kindergarten programs. So those that is for students who are age four, so I'm still preschool age. Previously, our district only had. If if you were in preschool and were getting services, it was 100% in a special education environment. And so that's another example of just building up that those inclusive practices district-wide. And that's a piece that we're, we're talking about as far as building up more opportunities. For our preschool students to be able to have more inclusive opportunities. That's an area of growth still that we need to keep focused on. Some things also just goes with the planning for all of our district processes. We are, are students with IP's and section 504 plans as well as invisible disabilities. We have a separate planning process that allows them to. Allows our teams to to plan intentionally for our students who might need some additional accommodations during our drills. And then finally, one of the things that we're continuing to build out, that's the area that's excitement for us this year. We've been working with Monroe High School and with Ashley Tui, also the athletic director, as far as creating some opportunities for. That unified or cooperative sports partnership where students with disabilities participate with students without disabilities. In athletics and Ashley's really taken a leadership position with that. We've identified three schools that are that want to play us, and so we're looking at building that out. We built that out into the budget last year to have some additional monies for coaches. So we are looking at hopefully getting that the coaching positions posted this week, so we could then have parent information nights coming. In October and build that out. So after the new year, we'll be. If all goes well, we, I know one high school wants to have a home and away game with us, and we have a couple of others that are wanting to. To have games, so we should be able to pull up hopefully at least four to six opportunities for basketball season. So. That's just kind of the work as far as again, this isn't a Monroe High School or Hidden River. Initiative, this is, this is a Monroe School District initiative, and we're, we're, we're building that out. We have a ways to go still. It's not perfect. It's still messy, but we are, we are, each year we're building on new layers of of supporting our students.
Oh, thank you for that, David. I'll speak briefly to Hidden River, and I'll turn it over to Brett Noah for Monroe High School. So as David said, in 2019, Hidden River. Middle School is identified as a demonstration site, and here you can see, and this is only to the webpage where you can see. The trouble is, we talk about people coming and learning from our demonstration sites by coming for in-person visits. We also know it's not always possible, especially during COVID. It was not. And so this is where others from across the state, and actually, we have people coming nationally, Monroe High School will actually be hosting a. A group of people from California who are coming to learn about this across California as as well, but people can go on here, access. Artifacts, look at that master schedule and see, okay, what were those movements that that you made? How did you build in co-planning, co-teaching, and those collaborate collaboration time and kind of access these artifacts? I'll also note that what we've learned in this partnership and learned across the demonstration sites is having the work continue to be site-based does not build sustainability and capacity. Too. And so the districts or the schools that made a lot of movement, we had district engagement. Monroe is. Monroe is a perfect example of this that we've been in partnership with, right? I mean, even before the high school was officially a demonstration site, we were in. Partnership, and they were gracious for us to be a thought partner and move along in those, you know, very visionary leadership moves. We've been in partnership with. David and Joy and and Robin, and so this is helping us from what we've learned here with the UW and Monroe partnership is how we are looking at. Redefining our demonstration sites project going forward, that we are are looking at demonstration site districts. And so, yeah, please look at the website. That will all be. Coming, coming on board too, because we know for sustainability and capacity, it really has to be across the district-wide level and not just housed within sites too.
Um, so Brett will give a little more of the context of the history at the high school and and kind of our journey. I just wanted, this is a picture we took. That I think really represents something we're really proud of at the high school and how far we've come. It has been hard. We're not there yet, and we have a ways to go. But what you see here, this is two classes that have become one. So this was actually as, you know, a scenario where teachers are maybe. Not as engaged in the work or maybe shying away from the work. I think this, this picture is cool because it represents a situation where we actually had teacher creativity and an idea to take a wall down. And we actually have two classes happening right now with two gen ed teachers and a co-teacher, and sometimes the the wall goes up just depending on the day and what students need. But we have a lot of create creative thinking happening with the goal of what's best for each student in these classes. We have a special education teacher delivering lessons. We have gen ed teacher delivering lessons. We have them switching on and off. And it's, it's pretty remarkable. And so it's really cool to think this picture represents. Quite a few kids getting the specially designed instruction they need, whether they have a disability or not. And that came just out of some of our remarkable staff named there on the left. Some key teacher leadership. I don't think we would have made it this far if it wasn't for some of the names up there. And it's just really exciting to be in a place where more creative strategies are being attempted instead of less. And it makes us really excited to think about where we could take this in the future.
And I'll just, I just want to end with some, some thank yous and and just acknowledge that this is super exciting for our school to to be able to start hosting. Schools and districts from from around the state and outside the state. It's also really scary because we're opening up our practice. And sharing what we're doing, knowing that we have a lot of questions we still have to answer and a long ways to go. But really proud of our staff for their commitment. So I want to start by just thanking Rena Marie and the UW. They have just been a phenomenal partner. In helping us expand what is possible within our school, and and you guys have just been really great this whole time, really trying to put Washington. On that, on that map, you know, moving forward, just knowing how far behind a lot of our schools are. So thank you. Want to just highlight and thank David and Joy and his team. You know, we can't take these steps of courage without a lot of support, and and David and Joy and his team have been really helpful at. Just trying to help us get to yes when we have questions and need resources. And you guys have been really supportive as as we've taken steps forward. So thank you to David. And I want to recognize Noah here for. Brand new assistant principal three years ago, just kind of got thrown into leading this. Former special education teacher, and and we brought him to Monroe specifically to help us with this work. So he's done a really great job of. Of guiding it forward. Thank you to our teachers. We have at least one here. Yep, one Karen Rose. She's one of our co-teachers. And she's phenomenal. She's teach special ed and has had a lot of different roles in our district, but she's, she's jumped in with both feet. As has a lot of our staff at the high school to. Try something we probably weren't prepared to try, but we decided that the only way to do it is to learn, and you can't learn if if you're just taking these tiny little baby steps, you're not going to get anywhere. So we've. We've made some commitments around trying to make high school plus happen for all kids. And that took a tremendous amount of courage from our staff, and I know some of them are probably zooming in, listening to this, and and they just. You guys need to know that that staff up there believes in all students. And we may not know how to do it completely, but we really are trying. And as Karen will tell you, we've come a long ways, and. She just said it before we came up here, like we're, we feel ready to share what we're doing with with whoever wants to come see it. Because half the battle is just giving it a shot and figuring things out as you go, you know, so. And then the last two folks I really I want to highlight is Matt Chalfont, Mindy Haas. There are two. Teacher leaders on our special ed team. That have just done a tremendous amount of work and and just support on the back end. Across our school to really support our staff. At times they challenge, you know, beliefs and things like that. And there's been a lot of time and effort and hours just really figuring out how do we do this and how do we support our teachers to take these steps forward. So. Matt and Mindy have have just been critical. There's no way we would be here without those two, so I wanted to give them a shout out. If I could, and can I share just a quick story to end? I think this will, this will be encouraging to you, to you guys, as I know. You're getting ready to, you know, set goals for our district, and we're talking about strategic planning and mission and vision work. When I first got to Hidden River, we kind of went through a similar process with the staff, and it was really fun. It took a while. And one of the, one of the things that we talked about at the middle school level was, you know, no matter where we get our kids. We want to propel them through middle school and like launch them as good as we can, so that they, even if they struggled in high school, like they could make it across. And one of the things we talked about as a part of like our mission and vision work was this idea of trying to get kids to grade level, or if not, like. If they started way far behind, like we want to get them as close as we can to grade level as possible by the time they leave us. And so we did all that work. And it was, it was like a week later. Curtis Lindy and Tonya Witcher, there are two special ed teachers came into my office and they sat down and they were, they were like, Brett, we've got good news and bad news. And I said, okay, let's, let's hear the good news first. And they said, we're, we're on board, like we, we believe in what we've been talking about. That whole process has been great for us, like we're on board. And I said, what's the bad news? And they said, there's no way we could pull that off right now. And I said, why? And they said, we're pulling kids out of classes. Like they don't even have access to grade level. And they brought with them to my office, they had like these resources that the kids were learning from, and they were like for second grade resources. And I said, well, what are you guys doing this afternoon? They said, what do you mean? I said, we're, we're going to take a field trip, and we marched down to the district office. And we started just pushing on like, hey, we, we can't keep this model. It's not going to work. And so my point in sharing that with you is just be prepared as we start doing this work and. Doing the planning and talking about who we are and what do we want for our kids. We're going to find really quickly some areas that. Need to change and improve, and it's, it's cool what that process will uncover as we do that as a district. And when we think about inclusion, for me as a principal, like that whole process caused two teachers to recognize. Something that wasn't working, and we fixed it like right away. So. I want to share that with you because I know we're getting ready to dig into, dig into that as a district, and it's, I think it's a really cool story that shows. Our teachers on the front lines. As we do this work, they're going to start to recognize things that maybe we haven't seen yet. It'll be, it'll be fun to respond to those things to try to improve our system, so.
You guys have questions?
It's not really a question. It's more of just, thanks for being courageous. Thanks for stepping out. Having the bravery to do that. I know that's not always an easy thing, but doing that for our students and being willing to put yourself out there for that. Truly appreciate that. Thank you, David, for bringing us up to speed with some of the unified sports. I know that. President Bumpus and I had met with a community member and sort of brought that forward and pushed on that a little bit. So it's really exciting to hear that update and to see. The good things that are happening for all students and the work that we're doing to be more inclusive. It's amazing that we get to do this as. It's amazing that we get to do this as Monroe, right? We get to experience this and have you, Rena and the U Dub come in and walk alongside us in this and make improvements for our students. I think that's incredible. It's an amazing opportunity that we have. And I, it's just, it's a great day to be in Monroe and it just makes me so excited to see all the strides that we're continuing to take, noticing the places that we're, we need to improve and we need work to be done. And we're continually putting ourselves out there and saying, okay, we're going to do this. So thank all of you. Thank you to all the teachers who've made this happen that Brett has already thanked. The one question I do have is, do we have any data that shows since we've started demoing this and doing this, what are the improvements that we're seeing? You know, and some of these students who would typically be pulled out of classrooms, are we seeing bigger leaps in their, you know, what they're learning within the year, you know, coming closer maybe to standards or whatnot?
Yeah, and the data that we had at Hidden River, and this was back when we were having good year-to-year aspect testing, so good comparison. After Hidden River really kind of re-envisioned how they were serving our students with disabilities, what we were finding was the growth scores for students with disabilities. While they might still be below standard, they were making much more progress than students without disabilities. So that goes to show, you know, with the program, with with the getting that access to the general education curriculum, you know, they were start closing the gap. So it'll be exciting with now now that we're back back to getting better year-to-year data to really see see that um that that growth data.
I can speak to two things and share to follow up with that. When we look at where the statewide data is showing LRE for one, two and three across the state and where Monroe School District is, they are above that state data. So we are seeing that, like we pull that together and share that as well. And then I also think of, you know, other outcome measures that are harder to define. So, you know, whereas we think about this building this culture belonging, so if you have students who were not engaged in their gen ed classes, not engaged with core content, not engaged in extracurricular activities, you know, we're seeing what Crown and Crab Apple talk about is this belonging gap. And I think that's another gap that's closing in Monroe School District is the belonging gap. So sure, we can have this achievement gap, but how can students achieve until they've been in spaces that they can belong authentically? And so I I think that's, you know, we can, you know, try to gather some more kind of data to to do that. And I think that's one goal we have is looking at student advocacy student advocacy and 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 voice in this coming year too. So I'll just, you know, kind of put that out there as we think about outcomes for student student family belonging.
Had the opportunity to tour with David last year and go through all the way through kindergarten, through high school, visit some classes with Noah, very proud of the of the work that we do. Question I have is finished high school and then we go into transitions, that period, how does that fit in to this? This whole process, it's a little bit outside of K through 12.
Well, and some of that, that would be our 18 to 21-year-old program, which is transitions. And I think that kind of builds out that whole inclusive practices piece into our community. The kids in that young adults who are in that program are going out to different job sites. They are working alongside, they're working with job coaches, but they're working alongside adults and other young individuals without disabilities. And so that's also building that inclusive. Our kids are then graduating from that program and they're getting jobs working in the community that they that they live in. And that's why the goal is that it's special education is not separate. And that's that needs to, that whole thought needs to go away, that it's inclusive practices from the time they're born. That's just what we do. That's, you know, in alignment with our CCDI work. You know, the work that Chris is doing, Chris Cronus is doing with the MLL department. That's all, those are all examples of just building up layers and layers of inclusive practices. It's not just for students with disabilities, but but all of our students.
I'd like to follow up with with the story. This weekend, I just went to a class reunion for my for my wife. And she was part of the White River School District. It's kind of down around Sumner. And her siblings had gone through school, but she had only went there, I think during the fourth, third and fourth grade. Anyway, they found her and invited her. And when we got there, the person, it surprised me, the person that organized the entire event, hundreds of students, was somebody that was vision impaired, was blind, at least what he told us. And he had true technology and I guess through, you know, using Facebook and social media, he was able to make those connections and bring all these people together, hundreds of people together. And he was, there was kind of like an all-class reunion and then there was a class of 78. He said he was just drug around everywhere, but everybody was got to make, you know, restable those relationships. So anyway, it just, I thought of this this presentation and then just have that happen this weekend. Great guy. Totally can't see, didn't even know what type of, how much money was given to him with the checks. But he said his sons were going to take care of it. So that kind of leads into the or from the transitions, being a part of society and being a valuable member. So just so just I want to share that.
Awesome. Well, David and Noah, Brett, Rena Maria, thank you guys so much for this. I had one question for David about this with us bringing in athletics into this this arena and having a few school districts who are are working on this. And Rena Maria, I appreciate you sharing our where we fall as a state, where we have and where we've come. We've got a long way to go. But is, are there any conversations about what this could look like for WIAA at a larger level to have not just a few schools work together, but actually have something that regionally or statewide? I know it's still got a long ways to go and it's still messy, like you said, but is there? Is there a trajectory for that?
Yeah, we we are doing the first steps this year and, you know, I had on that slide, I had unified slash cooperative sports. We're really, we're we're dipping our toes in it this year with cooperative sports. And that's less, it's less formal than unified sports. It's through Special Olympics. And that's a whole network and that's where it's more more regimented as far as league play and a lot of different areas. There's also part of, if we continue with this and continue to build it out, it would be unified schools. So it's not just looking at sports as a way, but it's it's through all of your clubs. It's 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 through your student body. It's through clubs, just basically become a unified school district or school where everything you do is is couched in inclusive practices. So we're building that out. We're outside, but the progress we're getting, I think actually Ashley was going to be getting a couple of dates. We're going to get the dates for the games this year and then we're going backwards plan it so that we are going to make make sure that we pull it off this year.
Love it. I'm thinking about, I know we have a presentation coming up. We're going to look at our panorama data and the belonging information as well. And I think that that leads into and it feeds into the academic data is that you feel that you belong. It's just going to increase your ability to succeed in and not just emotionally, but also academically. And so I'm just thinking, not just Monroe kids, but how does this help our state, our region as well, that it makes it bigger left? So I appreciate you guys for leading the way. I just want to also, Brett, I appreciate you thanking all of your staff that is a part of that, but we want to thank you. And I see Jonathan Judy back there as well for both you guys for being vulnerable to do this. Like you said, it's a scary thing, but it's a necessary thing. And I think that to just encourage you, it goes a long way when someone travels a long way and recognizes, hey, we don't have it all together, but we're doing our best. I think that actually lowers that affective filter for the individuals coming in and they're not as intimidated, like, well, they've got it all figured out. We have so much further to go of going, no, we're still working on figuring it out, but we've come a long way from where we are. And I think that that makes it a much more realistic thing for other schools to be encouraged to be a part of this. Rena Maria, I just want to thank you as well for, I think a lot of times the research in this, we think that, you know, we have our vacuum of the ivory tower of academia that this idea works, but you are willing to get messy with the boots on the ground and say, okay, if this doesn't work and this does work, but how does this research play out in the real world? And to do that with our schools, thank you for taking the time to work with us because this is, this is worth it. So appreciate you guys.
Close that research to practice gap for sure.
All right. Thank you guys so much. That said, talking about achievement and academic growth data, we're going to move on to presentation 2.02 Student Academic Growth and Achievement Report. And I'll invite our Chief Academic Officer, Kim Whitworth, up to discuss that data with us as well.
And along with Jennifer Murphy, who is an amazing data person who puts things in a way that we can all see it and figure out what we need to do with it. So thank you again for this time today. This is our annual update on what our SBA data looks like. We're still in the process of digging into that, looking at root cause analysis. In October, we're going to come back and talk to you about our panorama data, attendance data, sense of belonging and tie that in. And then of course, in November-ish, December-ish is when you start looking at school improvement plans. So that's kind of our our trajectory for all of that. The Monroe commitments, I want to make sure that we always touch on that. And we've been thinking a lot about it since we've been doing that, the PLC work. So we use the commitments to frame the work that we're doing. And we have a clear focus on essential standards, ensuring that we have high expectations and we're looking at the rigor that's embedded in the standards. And we know that as long as we're aligned with standards and we're looking at the the rigor in the standards, we're going to do better on the SBA. That's just going to be a direct through line there. And we're also looking at providing engaging learning opportunities with support for students who may struggle and looking at a strong MTSS model. So when we are looking at assessments, and this is an old graphic that I think I've used with you in the past, every single day, teachers are doing formative assessments, whether it's just talking to kids, walking around, looking at what they're doing, doing a quick exit ticket, but they have a a a standard for learning that they're looking at. And then they do a quick formative assessment. We also have common formative assessment and that's where our collaborative teams come in. So you'll have seventh grade math teachers who come together, are looking at standards, develop a common formative assessment, go out and give that assessment, come back in and then reflect on what is it that they need to do moving forward to make sure that students are are meeting standards. We also have I Ready, which we've had for seven years, and that is our interim benchmark. And it's kind of a, it's a nice two to three times a year calibration tool so that we can make some some bigger macro moves than that we do with that common formative assessment that we do every day. And then, of course, the SBA is kind of the ultimate calibration assessment. It's an assessment that's given to students across the country. We can look and see where are schools that have similar demographics as ours who are doing really well? We can learn from these people within our state, within our district and throughout the country. So achievement data, and we're going to start with smarter balance. And let's go ahead and start with smarter balanced math. SBA is a comprehensive online assessment that is aligned with Common Core state standards. And in mathematics, English arts, literacy and the ELA. So if you're looking at math smarter balance, this first graph is showing you just kind of big picture overall. We're looking at district level 2019. We don't have 2020. That was the first year of COVID, if you remember, and kids were at home. And I I think we were still trying to get computers in their hands at that point. And then and 21, 22 and 23. And as you can tell, we're, we are growing every year. I think you will hear from a lot of teachers and leaders that this year seems to be a little bit more normal than it's been. So we are getting kids back in school to do the business of school. We're getting better about how we serve their needs and make sure that they're being successful. So year by year, we are definitely improving. So when we go to this, we have another piece of data to add in here for you, and that's the Washington State. So again, when you're looking at this, Met standard is green, did not meet standard is red. And then in the gray is the Washington State standard. And our data is not where we would like for it to be. And so we are at this point setting some goals and chasing the state average. And that's going to be our goal for this year and we're going to keep moving forward improving year after year after that.
And sorry, is that Washington State standard? That's the average across the state?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes. And so then when we're looking at math smarter balanced assessment, this is by grade level, third, fourth and fifth grade. So this is elementary. Third grade, we're still looking at that 56% for 2022. If you look at fourth grade and 23, that's kind of cohort data. So I can't say for sure that it is because I haven't done a justification of the students who were in third grade in 2022 and the fourth graders in 23. But it's a pretty high level of learning and it's definitely an anomaly compared to our other grade level over time data. The next one is math, and this is every grade level is showing some growth for secondary as well. And you can see from 21, 22 to 23, little by little, we are getting better and improving. I would attribute that to our focus on social emotional learning as well as narrowing in on the on standards and essential standards and the common formative assessments that teachers are developing and giving. I think that's gone a long way to make sure that we're getting better at what we do and so that students are getting better with what they're learning. Here's another look of this, and sometimes line graphs are a little bit easier to see trends over time. In this one, we're looking at third, seventh and 10th. And a lot of times those are benchmarks that we will use if we want to pull out just specific grade level data. We've talked a lot about third grade. We want students reading by third grade. Seventh grade is a really heavy duty math year. It's usually where their pre-algebra one standards are coming in. And 10th grade is a year where most of, most of our kids have had algebra one by then. So those are some really important benchmark years that we continue to take a look back. So this next slide is disaggregated by groups and programs, low income, special education and multilingual learners with the district averages in there as well. So when we're talking about closing opportunity gaps, this is the data that we're looking at along with gender, race and ethnicity that we're going to look at in the next slide. So we want all of these lines for low income, for special education and multilingual learners to be much higher and eliminating gaps. And on the next slide is the disaggregation by race and ethnicity. And again, you can see the district average in gray. And so we're going to be looking at our Hispanic and our our black and African-American students to see what we can do to eliminate opportunity gaps for those cohorts of students. I Ready, K8 math. So I Ready is our interim benchmark assessment given three times a year. It's a web-based adaptive diagnostic assessment that adjusts its question to suit each student's needs. So there's a series of correct answers. Then the assessment, the next question that a student will get is going to be a little bit harder. If they are struggling with a with one of the questions or they don't get it right, then it has a tendency to make the assessment a little easier. One of the reasons we like the I Ready diagnostic, in addition to making sure that we're targeting students and and providing them the support that they need, it also sets up their pathway lessons for I Ready. So I Ready is also a tool that goes in and based on what kids know and based on what kids may not know yet, helps to fill into some of that, fill in some of those gaps with lessons that are monitored by teachers. So how have relative placements changed from spring to spring? So this shows the relative placements for elementary, mid or above grade level, early on grade level, one grade level below, two grade levels below and three plus grade levels below that. And so one of the things, one of the strategies that we often will use is to look at the students who are in the yellow. And sometimes we refer to them as the bubble kids. And that's a good chunk of students. So we're going to be looking at those students to see how we can set goals to get them into the lighter green and the darker green. So from spring to spring, this is the distribution of students. This shows relative placements for middle school. And again, it's the same mid or above grade level, early on, one and then two plus grade levels below. And again, you can see we have fewer students in the yellow. We have fewer of those bubble kids, but those are going to be our students of focus for the coming year. So this is, this next slide right here is we're going to want to provide you a little bit more context. And so just like in the previous slides where we had the the district average so that you could see like how how do each of the demographics compare to a district average? We're going to be looking at comparison for the state as well as upcoming after this is We're going to be looking at comparison for the state as well as upcoming after this is for the nation. So the state comparison for elementary, each grade level, there is a norm reference score from 18 to 19, and then the Washington State year to date. And we have the the national coming up. So if you're looking at this again, it is. The state comparison. So there's the grade level that's norm referenced. Then there's the year to date, Washington State, and then there's a district. And you can see again, we're hovering right there along with the state. And so we are chasing that right now, and our goal is to surpass the state averages in our iReady assessments as well. The next slide shows middle school. We have more students as time goes by in our district. We know that our our students struggle more and more and get a little bit further behind. So we're looking all the way back to kindergarten and preschool to identify what are some things that we need to make sure that they are absolutely getting in kindergarten first and second. To help launch them into middle school and middle school does the same. What are what are standards and what are skills? That students need to know and be able to do so that they're they're successful in high school and college and career and beyond. The national comparison is next. So where before you were looking at comparison to the state here, we are looking at comparisons with the nation. And again, we are right there in the middle. We know that we can do even better than this. And so while the context is reassuring. Because we get concerned when we're not serving 100% of our students, we know that we're kind of right there with the national average. And the next one is for elementary. So the first bar is the same as 2018 national norm we saw earlier. And then the second bar is the national, did I get mixed up? Okay. And then the next is the national distribution. A third bar is the MSD distribution. So if you're looking again at kindergarten. All the way through fifth, we're right there with the national average. And again, the next slide, when you're looking at secondary, it is the same. This is also an opportunity for us to look across the straight across the state with iReady and across the nation with iReady and SBA. To see what are schools that have similar demographics to ours that are beating the norm and outpacing the state and outpacing the nation. So iReady math growth data, K eight, iReady growth data. This growth monitoring is a general outcome measure of progress monitoring. It shows whether students are on track for their target growth by projecting where their ability level will be at the end of the school year. And comparing the projected growth to growth targets. We know some students need more to make more than a year's worth of growth to meet standard, and this helps us to keep an eye on them. If we continually focus on one year's worth of typical growth, we have students who will never catch up. So we're looking at growth. We want more than typical because we want these students to be meeting standard. That's the ultimate goal. Growth is great. We love growth, but we want them meeting and exceeding standard. So if you're going through and you're looking at the next slide. The goal for typical growth is 100%. 100% means that each student has one year's worth of growth that they're looking at. Stretch goals are a little more complex and require knowing where the student is starting. Students who have a tendency who who have a tendency, students who score lower have more growth over time than students who might be already meeting and exceeding standard. So that's something that we're looking at as well. We've been working on average of about 20%, but we'll need to refine this for the the levels of accuracy in terms of our goal setting. The stretch goals are the ones that we're looking at for our MLL students, for our students with disabilities, for our students who have IEPs. For our students who are. Not meeting standard. We're trying to get them to grow a little bit more. The next series of slides, it's the same information in terms of what's being shown, but it's for ELA. So this next one, again, you can see we made some growth from 21 to 22. But we are at 49% for reading for 22 and 23, and we need to get at least back up to 60%. So this next one is again, we can look at the Washington State standard. So green is Monroe School District meeting standard, gray is the Washington State meeting standard. And the next one, this is disaggregated for elementary so that you can see what it's looking like in third, fourth and fifth. Again, there's that third grade. Is that 58? I can't even read anymore. 56. Thank you. The 56%. It's just such an interesting cohort. And then when you look again at fourth grade, they're at 52%. But in third, fourth and fifth grade, we are slowly making gains and getting back up to where we need to be pre pandemic. And with the work that we're doing, we're know, we know we're going to be able to surpass that moving forward. Next slide is for secondary. So there's sixth, seventh and eighth grade, and then there is 10th grade. 2019 is the pre pandemic and we're working to get back to that. And you can see that every year we're growing a little bit except for eighth grade. It looks like we stalled a little bit there. So one of the things I'm going to, I'm just going to do a little bit of a an aside. One of the things that our district leadership team is doing right now is looking at this data and we're dig, we have two groups. We're digging into math and we're digging into reading because we're trying to understand what is causing this. So we're doing a root cause analysis as we're going through and just trying to figure out what our goals are going to be and what our next steps are. So ELA smarter balance, there's our line graph for that. And again, it's just a little bit easier to see that we're tilting back up a little bit. So from 2019 to 21, we took a dip and it's coming back up again. The next slide will show disaggregated for low income, special ed and MLL. And again, these are the gaps that we talk about and the gray is the district average. The next one is disaggregated by race and ethnicity. Our Hispanic and our Latino are two or more races, black, African American are significantly below district average. So we need to continue to do recause analysis to determine what it is that's happening and what we can do moving forward to make sure that we're eliminating opportunity gaps for all of our kids. I ready reading is the next one. And in this one, it's the national comparison and national norm for elementary. So the first bar is the 2018 is the national norm we saw earlier. So the national norm doesn't change. The second bar in each of those years is the national distribution. And then the third bar is MSD distribution. So again, we're looking at those kids kiddos who are falling right there in yellow, who are true grades below, and we're going to be working to move them up. The next slide is for secondary. Middle school, sixth, seventh and eighth. And then we have iReady state comparison. So now we're going to look and see how we're doing against the state. So see comparisons for elementary for each grade level, there is a norm reference score from 18, 19. That's when they did their last norming and then Washington State year to date. And then in the next slide, we're going to be or in the next few slides, we're going to be looking at the national average. Again, we are tracking with the state in reading as well.
Kim?
Yes, sir.
With iReady, is that something that is is used throughout all school districts throughout the state? I I would, I thought it was some tool that we use specifically here. So is it, is it used throughout the state?
It's not used by every school district. It is an optional resource that we have used for two reasons. One is we want to make sure that we have really good ongoing data. And the second thing that iReady does is that lesson pathway that we talked about that fills gaps for kids. So it is a resource that's used even internationally at some of our international, our international schools, international schools. Across the country and in some schools in Washington State. I think we had, we had iReady before I got here, but one of the school districts in our area that we know use this tool really well is Everett. So we continue to look to Everett to see what strategy they use to use the lessons, to use the assessments and all the different tools that come with iReady to. To continue to make sure that kids are learning.
Thank you.
A national comparison for iReady. And so let's see. I think one more. Thank you, thank you. So the first bar is the national norm from 2018, 19. The second bar is the national distribution and then the third bar is Washington State. And it looks like especially when you're looking at early elementary, they're doing, they're doing pretty well. They're definitely growing kids. We have to take a look at upper elementary and then certainly middle school, I think are going to be some areas they have to continue to go. Oh gosh, please.
Chuck, I'm wondering if your question related to like how the norm reference is determined. When we partner with iReady, we agree to share data with them. So all of the districts that partner with them across the nation, share their data. And then they compare like how we do on iReady compared to the the smarter balanced assessment. And then they create the norm reference using all of that data from all of their schools. And then they they also look at how students are performing on their state assessments, even if they're not a part of the iReady team. I have like, I can give you links to all their research if you're interested in it.
We have stuff for you. So here is our national comparison and national norm for elementary. Wash Monroe School District is in the third bar. Year to date, Washington is the middle bar, and then the first bar is the national norm. So we're exceeding the national norm. We're still about on track with the state. And the next one is our middle school iReady data. I think one of the things that I also appreciate about the iReady data that we get is it's more than just you are passing or you're not. It really helps us to see where are, because these are going to be different strategies. Students who are a year below are going to have a different strategy than kids that are two plus years below. So this is definitely giving us a little bit more data. Look at Chris all the way in the back. Okay. 23,000 schools, 10 million students, Tacoma, Ritten, Rinchland, Everett, North Shore, Edmonds, Taquilla. And there's more. Okay, next slide, please. I ready growth is monitoring a general outcome measure, form of progress monitoring. It shows whether students are on track for their target of growth by projecting where their ability level will likely be at the end of the school year. So this is also something this, these are the kind, these are the areas of growth, typical growth. We want everybody to have one year's worth of growth. I think when when we're looking at this and Jennifer and I were having a conversation about this earlier. The kids who are significantly below grade level, we do an okay job with them. We have a tendency to have them grow more than that year's typical growth. The area that I've struggled with my career and we still see the data here in Washington, in Monroe School District. Is our students who are learning at standard and above standard. Those are the kids that have a tendency to not show that one year's worth of growth that we want to see. So we're looking at students who are not meeting standard, but we're also looking at our advanced learners to make sure that they are also getting that opportunity to have a full year's worth of learning under their belt. Okay, so the next one, these are some draft goals that we're looking at and these these could change. One of the things that that Jennifer touched on a little bit was that. I ready also will, looking at the diagnostic will predict what percentage of students, based on where they are now, if they're showing typical growth. And if they're showing stretch growth will meet and exceed standard on the SBA, on the SBA. There are a few of our draft goals that are already matching up, but we've only got like 75% of our assessments in, so we're still looking at that. But that's going to be something else that I think is going to help us to set goals. But for now, we're looking at 100% of our students K eight are going to make their annual progress goal for the year. We want all of our kids to have one year's worth of growth. We'd like to look at, and this is something that Jennifer and I need to work on a little bit more, is the stretch growth. These are the kids who need to grow more than one grade level. And so we want to have at least 20% and I think it's 20 to something percent is 35% is what you're really looking for. So for the four, the third bullet point right there, we're looking at 39.1% of the students will meet standard on the math. Math SBA by the end of the 23 school, 24 school year, up from 37.7 in the 22, 23 school year. That 39.1 is the state average that we've been talking about. Next one, please.
Kim, can I ask a quick question related to that?
Absolutely.
So we're looked at a lot of data back to 2019 historically, since we've been using, I already used it nine years roughly here.
I want.
Ish.
You know what? It wasn't until even in my first year, not all students were required to take the assessment or do the iReady lessons. So we were piloting. So I'm not sure that the data is going to be worth comparing to what we have now.
That aside, looking at even, and this goes way back, we also HSP data and then the SBA, SBA, when we look at like data for the state. Have we typically historically, and I'm relatively new to the community, so I don't know, has Monroe typically matched the state, been behind the state or exceeded the state? When they look at those types of assessments historically, where we've been pre 2019, when we look back the last 15 years or so, what is the trend? Because we can look back and COVID just throws everything out the window. So when we look at that, where have we been even looking at 2015 to 2019?
I want to make sure that I'm pulling accurate data and I can get you some more longitudinal data. My, when I, when I took the job in 2019, we were below the state average then. And I just, I couldn't, I couldn't tell you five years before then or 10 years before then. But some of our schools and some of our grade levels do a little bit better and they're approaching the state. Some are not quite there. So the average as a whole, we're just a little bit below the state average.
The reason I'm asking is I love the goal of like, let's make this a realistic goal of getting back to state average. But my question is historically, if we've been above that, are we setting a ceiling for ourselves or is this actually a really good place for us where we've been historically? That that, does that make sense?
Yes, it totally does. And I think this is, I think this is a very reasonable, doable goal. Sometimes we set these goals and it's like, you know, 10 percentage points above and it's like, sure, why not? But I think looking at our state average and kind of where we've been, this is a doable goal that I believe we can meet. Jennifer thinks we're going to exceed it.
And may I add one thing, please? We're also as a companion to our strategic plan, we will set five year, you will be adopting five year goals. Once we're done with our plan, we'll have our associated metrics, what we expect to achieve five years out from now. So by then, we'll certainly see the goal will be to surpass the state average for sure.
Okay. And then also, when you're talking about your goal, your draft goals, or is a lot of that, is some of that built around? I was trying to write some notes. When we look at especially like the achievement gaps with our racial and ethnicity and our spending MLL data that's disaggregated. A lot of that was reflected back in the end of the school year of our, when our building leaders came in and they talked about each of theirs. Are we using that information when we talk about when we come in November of those draft goals? Is a lot of that going to be represented in those as well?
Yes.
Because of this exact data.
Yes. And I just, actually, I just sat down with Brett and his team to look at the high school goals and they're, they're, they've got an MLL goal. That's, that's going to be the main area of focus, knowing that what they're learning and what they're doing as they're figuring out instructional practices and intervention practices and looking at standards. They know that whatever they're doing for that group of students is going to have a positive impact on all of our students. So in addition to an academic achievement goal in math, academic achievement goal in reading, we're looking at attendance, sense of belonging, MLL.
And I, I think if we go, if you look at that first goal where it says 100% of students will make their typical progress. That is really being thoughtful about some of these subgroups of students that you're calling out. When we only have right now anywhere from like 40 to 60% of students who are making a typical years growth, we know we're actually widening the gap. And then, but if you look at the students who are making their stretch growth, we have students that are 20 to 35% of our students are. So we're actually doing really well on the stretch goal, but we're not doing really well on the typical growth goal. So I think by focusing some of our attention to that typical growth, we are going to see some benefits for all of our students. Because we're already doing a nice job with our students, making their stretch growth goal. We just need to do a better job of making sure that all of our students are making at least a year's growth. We're not widening the gap farther.
Thank you. That's really good.
And some of these, some of the things that we're doing, there are things that we've been doing that you are very well aware of. We have a math adoption, so we're relaunching math K 12. This is an opportunity to bring teams together to look at the standards, see where the standards, these essential standards show up in our math curriculum and to really focus. Jennifer and Chris have been working with elementary to really look at reading to make sure that our curriculum and the science of reading are aligned. So between our curriculum that we have and the iReady pathway lessons and reading. We feel like we've got a decent curriculum in reading that we should be able to see some growth in reading as well. So the the collaborative team and PLC work that we're doing, the new curriculum and the professional development that we are offering our staff throughout this year. We're going to be in classrooms. We're going to be doing, we're looking at some studio days in math coming up. Our principals. Our principals are in classrooms, looking at the curriculum, providing support to teachers, answering questions, emailing us when they need everything. It really is a full court press to make sure that we're making some gains this coming year. And there's the reading goal, pretty much the same, hundred percent typical, twenty percent stretch, fifty point seven percent, which is again, the Washington State average, up from forty nine point nine. And Jennifer says we're betting, and she says we're going to exceed our goals. Over unders, we got a spread.
Well, I jumped the gun on my question, so.
No. I actually prefer that. It's great.
Questions, comments, concerns, quibbles? You know, I'm, I'm goal oriented.
Yes.
Strategic, thinking about things. I just have to say, even though I don't want to say it, this is not acceptable where we should be at. We should be one of the top just, top schools in the district in the state. And that's, that's who I am. It's, we need to be high achieving. We need to be on the top. We need to be ones that other schools achieve to our level. But as I'm learning about the multiple facets and circumstances and difficulties that that come across different levels of learning, I can say that iReady, I can connect with the best because I understand it, and it does show means of incremental improvement. Whereas the, the standardized test, standardized test is a snapshot and test taking and ability. How was your day, you know, when you took the tests? Then it's also something that Director Campbell brought up before, you know, are we, are the students learning? And are they just trying to achieve the tests? So our test scores are low, but the levels of learning, I do like the stretch, the stretch goals and having individuals come up, come up in their grades. I go back to these, these RCWs and the, the state requirements. There's four of them, read with comprehension, write effectively, communicate, know the core concepts and apply the principles, math, social, physical, civil, civics, history. Think analytically, logically, and created creatively to integrate technological literacy and fluency as well as life experiences. When I view education at school, I think about preparing the kids to get out into the world and be able to adapt. Because as we know, with the changes in technology and the way the world's evolving, they need to be able to think analytically, creatively, creatively. And so I, I ask myself, are the standardized tests and the the requirements of the law, are those set up to accomplish that? So I want our kids to go out in the workplace and be successful, whether they go work with their hands or trade or go into college. But everything's changing, as you know, and it's going to be changing quickly. So that's just kind of a, a comment. Another thing I wanted to ask, and this is going to be, I'm going to throw a surprise question to you. Back in nineteen twenty, when we were, or was it twenty twenty one, we were doing the the, the analysis, and we used, we were, we were using a comparison between schools, and we were shooting towards a school, and that school was MEAT. Based on the similar, similar number of students, demographics and such. So Sean, how would you, with what you've learned about the district, the teaching and learning, where we're at, how can we get up to MEAT's standards or what you're approaching that?
Yeah, that's, that's a really fair question, Chuck, but I'm going to give it a try anyways. Here we go. The, at this point, honestly, I, I would say that there are some valid comparisons that you could make between the school districts for sure. All kidding aside, it's a fair question to ask, but a difficult one to answer. In a lot of other ways, though, it's like apples to oranges. While we, we do have similar demographics, there are also some, some key differences as well. With all of that said, I believe with some small tweaks that we can make to our system over time, we can see some pretty phenomenal growth and get more kids to grade level relatively quickly. The, the one thing that you had mentioned that really piqued my interest was the fact that you mentioned standardized tests and you mentioned test taking and what, is that a true measure of whether or not a child is prepared to go out into the world? We're always going to have, if we're as public, as a public institution, we're going to have standardized tests, right? And we, we want to show our kids achieving at higher levels each and every year for sure. And one of the questions that I've been asking in my focus groups of both students, staff, and parents, is should we be considering other things as well? I do not think this is an adequate measure of how we are doing as a system. We've got, we only really have two measures that are consistent that we can compare to other school districts, and that's our growth and achievement data. We want to start measuring things such as how many, what kinds of opportunities do students have to obtain, obtain industry level certifications in the, in the Monroe School District? We, we know students that leave high school with industry certs along with their high school diploma have a better chance to enter the workforce and be successful, right? Part of the strategic planning process will be for us to determine what else should we consider along with these kinds of things, because I do think these things are important as well. But sorry, I didn't really probably answer your question, but.
I guess the way I would set the goal and understanding how the levels of knowledge are gained is to have everybody at grade level. It's kind of simplistic, but all the, all the tests and the demographics point to that, and that would be a goal for myself that I could, I would, I would like to have us accomplish so that the kids can succeed to the next level of learning. They build on a prior class, they're ready for the next level of instruction. So I'd like to see the kids at grade level.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much for all this data. That's right up my alley. I have a few questions. So does each student set a stretch goal?
They, so iReady gives a recommended stretch goal to the teacher, so it's based on, it's a number score. And so it's given to the teacher. We are encouraging teachers to have data chats with their students this year because we know that that has a really positive effect size for student outcomes. And so we're, we have established teacher leads at every school who we are training to do some of this and to take this learning back to their schools. So we're encouraging them to have data chats. They're not all setting their own individual goals, but we are encouraging teachers to look at the stretch goals and to have conversations with students around what that means and how they can achieve it. The stretch goal isn't necessary for all students, and even if every student was performing at their highest levels, we would still only expect a maximum of thirty five percent of students to make a stretch goal. It wouldn't be realistic for all students to make their stretch goal. They're very lofty. But we would like to see particularly for our students in our most marginalized groups, that they would be making their stretch goal year after year after year, because that's how we're going to close the gaps.
Okay, so it sounds like we haven't done it.
We haven't done it yet. No, we have re, we've recommitted to using iReady, and we're asking teachers to really dig in and learn all of what it can do for them. And so it's going to be a process to, to move towards that. I think everybody would say they value it. They want their students to set their own goals. We just haven't gotten there as a system yet.
Something else that we've talked about that Jennifer touched on is that, is the goal setting. What we know is that when students are self assessing their own learning, even day to day, or even at the end of the year reflection, or after an assessment like a standardized test, or after iReady, when they're able to articulate and understand where they're at in their learning, they're able to achieve much more and much faster. So the more we can bring kids into this process of not even, for, forget the standardized assessment, forget iReady, but anything that they're learning. And Sky Valley's done a nice job of that for the last couple of years, is that students are asked to self assess their learning at the end of a project, or at the end of a day, or at the end of a lesson. And so the more we can engage kids in goal setting and understanding their own learning and being responsible for it, that's also going to change the culture of, of our school and how we see educating students. And I think that's going to help with some of the gains that, that you've been talking about, Director Whitfield.
I like that a lot. So then when we say twenty percent of students will meet their stretch goal, where are we at currently?
Um, when I'm looking at the reading, we're past that. I mean, if the math, however, is a little bit lower, so we're doing really nice with stretch goal. iReady was, sorry, I forgot to use the microphone. iReady was really, they cautioned us to not set really broad stretch growth goals because it's very individualized per student, and so we're going to be spending really more time talking to our teachers about the students in their classrooms and which of those students really need to focus on their stretch goal. But we felt like twenty percent was, was a fair goal to make, considering we generally have that in most grades, and we didn't want to go all the way up to thirty five percent because iReady said that would be not realistic.
Well, if we're already hitting it, it's not, it's not an aggressive goal.
I think it's because it's individualized. So the students who made it last year are not the same students who may need it this year. And so it's hard to say student by student if you'll actually have that many, because it's, it's a very individualized goal, depending upon the student and their need, and that's based on the diagnostic, and we don't have the fall diagnostic data yet. That will close on October sixth. So we may be, may be modifying those goals as we close that window, and then we talk with our partners at iReady and get more insight into what would be the, the just right number for us.
Okay, great. And then, you know, you made some comments about the students who are achieving or at grade level. We are having a hard time keeping them there. Do we have rough numbers on that?
I don't have it in front of me, but we do have numbers from iReady on what that is. I, yeah, we can get it to you.
Because I think it'd be really interesting to say, you know, X percentage of students are at grade level, you know, at the next year.
Stay there. They kind of stay there, but they just don't grow their full percent, you know? So it's like, they're, they're doing good enough, and so you could, they're kind of the kids that you can forget about, because yep, they're passing everything they need to pass, they're, they're showing that they have understanding, but they're not making their year's growth. They're, you know, maybe they're making ninety five percent, or they're making eighty five percent. And so when we're looking at those growth numbers, we want them to be a hundred percent, but that means there's some percentage of kids that aren't making it, and why? And what we've seen traditionally is that's our kids who are already at grade level.
And we have a theory of action. If teachers really across the board in their collaborative teams, understand the standard and what it's really asking kids to do, then that's going to increase the rigor, which we believe is going to help students who are meeting and exceeding standard already. I think that's one of the things that we've been focusing on. Math curriculum, social emotional learning, ELL goals, MLL goals. But it's also. Yeah, we're later at that.
Yeah, and similarly, it'd be great to see like students are one grade level behind. How many move up to, you know, at grade level, and how many fall behind to like two grade levels behind? Or, you know, if we're seeing more at a certain grade or a certain subject that happening, it gives us at least at the board areas where we can focus investments. And then my last question, is this data shared with the parents? Like, our parents said, like, your student is two grades behind in math. And then are the parents like given material to like here so you can help catch them up?
Area of growth. iReady again has so much that we have not committed to, but we are committed to using it this year. And there are a lot of parent resources in iReady that we just need to make sure that we're start, starting to share.
What I will say is they've now improved their dashboards, so when parents log into iReady, after the diagnostic window closes, they'll be able to see their students' performance there. Previously, you'd have to print it out and give it to them, and so sometimes it was covered at conferences, and sometimes it wasn't. As we're recommitting as a system, we'll be looking for feedback from our teachers on what's the best way to share that information. iReady is primarily a teacher tool, however, and so we want parents to know how students are doing. But the particular information within it is meant for a teacher. So when a student isn't making a certain standard, or they're not growing in a certain way, it's information for the teacher to know how to intervene or how to provide intervention. And so if they're sharing that information with parents, it wouldn't be like a here, parent, take home packet. It would be, here's what we're working on in class, or here's what we're working on during our acceleration block. There are other resources that are better to share with families and things that we can send home. I would say that the particular information on iReady is designed for the teacher.
Okay, yeah, anything we could do to make it easier for the parents or enable them to help with the, the one-on-one coaching that we, that these students so desperately need? I think it would go a long way.
I think they've pretty much covered it all, but I just thank you for being so thorough in the information that you provide for comparing it to state standards, to national standards. That really helps give us idea of not just where we're at, but where everybody's at, and we're kind of, you know, in a very similar boat as we're trying to catch up from COVID and learning loss and all of those things. So I appreciate your work and all of the time and effort that you put into that to bring us up to speed. And I look forward to seeing more data as it becomes available and seeing the great things that we're going to do.
Thank you, ladies. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
All right, and that leaves us to move on to two point zero three, our CTE end of the year compliance report and our four-year planning, which is our third presentation. So I'd like to invite the Director of College and Career Readiness, Shannon Tarek, up to go over a career and technical education end of year compliance report, as well as all of the CTE programs. Take it away, Shannon.
Hi, thank you for having me. I am really excited to share our CTE end of year report with you and go over some of the highlights that we've had for our program. So before, oh, thank you. Before I start, I wanted to actually give a thanks to our amazing communications department for designing our new Monroe School District logo for career and technical education. So just want to point that out because, yeah, them. So I, to kind of start with this, I just want to go through our CTE program mission. So CTE is career and technical education. And it is really in line with what you've actually heard tonight, both from learning and teaching and from high school. So I just kind of, I didn't plan that, but here we go. So I just want to, we want to provide all students in the Monroe School District with opportunities to engage in high quality, robust CTE programs with strong vertical and programmatic alignment in order to prepare them for college and career readiness upon leaving high school. So really, our program is designed to be comprehensive, and we cover both middle schools and the high school, Monroe High School. So, and we are ever broadening that and working towards that. As most of you know, this is my, going into my fourth year in this role, and we've been doing a lot of kind of backend work, and so you're going to see some of that here. So just wanted to give a quick overview of what our program areas are. So CTE is comprised of five to six program areas. Oftentimes, we're going to loop two together because the size of them, but we have agricultural sciences, business and marketing, family consumer sciences, health sciences, and then our skilled and technical sciences and STEM. So courses that if you're interested, and I'm not going to spend all my time on this, but courses if you're interested in seeing where they're at, just taking, I don't know how to hit the link, sorry. There is a link on there. Thank you. So in the link here, you can see this, just at a glance, here are the courses by program area at Monroe High School. And if you scroll down, you're able to see what we're offering in, at both Hidden River and at Park Place Middle School. So we do have less course offerings at a middle school level, but because there's some, some credit issues with how CTE But, uh, because there's some, some credit issues with how CTE is awarded at the middle school level. So we just don't have that there. Um, but, and then those feed into those at the high school, so by program area. So, uh, if we go back to the slide deck, um, you can look at that at later date, but those are some of the course offerings that we have. Um, so in our end of your compliance report, um, these are all the just elements that are included within the, um, report. And this is a mandatory thing for, um, all CTE programs in the state. So this is, is why we do this. It's strongly tied to, um, the Perkins Grant, although we don't, you have to do it even if you don't get the Perkins Grant. We do, but, um, you have to do it anyway. So, uh, it is just, that's what the purpose of the report is. It includes, um, information on our advisory committees. Um, we have both an advisory committee that's a program advisory committee, specific to those programs I just showed you, and also our general advisory committee, which is a much broader, the whole group, um, advisory. Um, it also includes a four-year planning requirement, which I believe Holly put in your packet and we'll talk about in a bit. Um, and then some of our major accomplishments. It also reports on our dual credit offerings through CTE. Um, and that, which is not college and the high school, I will clarify later. And then, um, professional development, we offer our instructors as well as our instructor certification data. Because some, many of our folks come from industry and so it's a matter of are we moving them towards, um, being a part of, uh, the Plan Two certification at the state level. And then how we use our Perkins dollars is also part of the report. So those are just the elements. I'm not going to go over all of those or we'd be here all night. But I am, um, I did include a draft of the, um, the whole report in the materials, um, that I think were provided. So, um, Chuck, I'm so glad you asked the question of, you know, where is that RCW for those, those leadership and employability skills? Cause look, they're right there. So, uh, um, these are all the program criteria that we evaluate CTE on. And so if you are able to kind of take a peek at that, I, I just randomly didn't again plan it, but there's all the Washington Administrative Code and Revised Code of Washington linked to each of those program standards that are there for, to, to, um, support exactly what you were talking about, Director Whitfield, in regards to where is the stuff that requires us to do that? There it is. Um, I anticipated a need. That's just good teaching. So, um, so I didn't know. So, um, you can see our, our, um, our criteria is actually pretty thorough. Um, it goes into every little thing. Um, Jennifer Murphy, who you just saw speak, and I often joke that I am a curriculum director, I am a program director, I'm a little bit, I'm a fiscal. I got a little bit of everything on my plate and this is why. So it is, um, I mean, I got facilities even guys. So, uh, we, we kind of cover a whole range of things. And as part of our end of year, um, compliance report, we're really looking through, um, as a, within our general advisory committee that is composed of our industry partners, as well as our teaching staff and some of our support people and post-secondary partners. We look through how we as Monroe School District in our course offering are doing all of these things. So that's kind of where this piece comes into play. So our four-year planning requirement, and you might've seen in the materials, that I, there was a bunch of program evaluations. So every, um, fall, we used to sit down and do those. I moved that to the spring last year or the year before, I believe it was actually. And we were able to actually come back in person this last spring and do this with our, our committee. Um, and we walk through the facilities, we look at everything, we talk about our technology, we talk about all the little pieces. And from that, our, our groups come together and they each by program area develop goals for what they want to do in each of those areas. And then those goals, if there's common themes, I try to take and put into this tiny little document, which you do have a copy of at your desks, I believe. Um, if you could click on the link. Great. So, um, our four-year planning document, and I definitely am not going to read this to you. But, um, we, we start with what our current state is and then we plan four years ahead. And so, and you'll see it's very much linked to all of those program criteria that I just talked about. We have kind of been taking a drip, I drip approach, um, for how we sort of build this, this program, planning requirement that we have, uh, in order to make sure that our staff and our supports are in place so that when we, we get to the big stuff, um, we can go off fast. So, um, I think some of you have been listening to me now for four or five years, sorry. And, uh, I, you should know that I like, I'm, I actually am very strategic and I always want to go a little, a little, a little so that I can go fast later on. I like to go slow so I can go fast later. So you'll see this kind of continually build because some of these things were, were pieces I inherited on previous four-year plans. Um, and so we've been kind of building and building and that's why it looks like they get a little bigger as we go. Even just visually, the, the goals look longer all of a sudden. There's a reason for that. If you read through each of these, you'll notice, um, that there is common threads along with the mission and vision that you've heard Brett talk about with the high school plus for all because most of our CTE classes are offered at the high school level. And so, um, it's very important that we stay in line with there. You'll also see goals that are supporting, uh, working with our MLL students and our, um, the subgroups. One of the things you'll hear from me in about a month or so, um, is I'll be back to talk about Perkins. Yay. And when I talk about our Perkins Grant, um, I will be sharing some of the data that we have for our CTE completers on all of the, the subject areas you just saw, to show where those who are, have taken a concentration of CTE classes, where they show up in the data you just looked at. And that is another piece of how we set our goals is to look at that. So those are all a part of this as well. And then our comprehensive local needs assessment, which I will talk about at that time as well, also will hit on some of that same stuff. So they're all linked very closely together. Um, the, um, major accomplishments, and this is like a snippet of what the like two pages I wrote. So, um, uh, we have had an increase in the last year in our dual credit offerings. This has been extremely challenging, um, because quite honestly, our post-secondary partners were hit really hard by the pandemic and they have had their own challenges that we've been up against to increase that. The other thing that is, we're taking a hit on in CTE, CTE dual credit is not the same as college and the high school. And the state has just said, yay, college and the high school is going to be free to all students. Amazing. But they didn't say the same thing about CTE. So we're, we just kind of took a hit there, but hoping that that will be part of upcoming legislation at some point. So, um, we've done that by increasing and we, we didn't get as many in last year as I had hoped. But we did before the school year had started, but we did get a couple in our health sciences program. Additionally, we worked really hard with our Snohomish County CTE Directors Group to, um, with our Pacific Northwest College Consortium, um, which, uh, pro, are partners with, Shoreline, Edmonds, Bellevue, um, lots of our local Cascadia, a lot of our, our local, um, community colleges or other, um, schools, post-secondary schools, um, to actually attach more. So we will actually be a member in this upcoming year. We laid all that groundwork last year. We have had a successful revision of that general advisory committee with the unfortunate acronym of GAC. But, and that includes really increasing our industry partner membership. So when I took on this role, it was pretty minimal. And, uh, we have, we have industry partners in all of our program areas at this point and we're looking for more. I think we're going to be at the Rotary later this next month. So to have that conversation. So, um, uh, but really, really happy with where we're at with that. We also have continued to update outdated elements of our facilities. So we can't do it all at once, like I wish, but we can't. So one of the things that, um, we've been doing is using that, that program advisory and general advisory committee, as well as just going through all of our facilities. So I've gone through with tech, I've gone through with facilities, I've gone through with all of our different departments, um, on all of those standards and had people kind of give me like, what can we do now? What can we do in a little while? And what can we do long-term? Um, and so, uh, we're doing a lot of those short-term fixes, um, in, in both our, um, in our facilities. So for instance, in our culinary arts room, we just put in a new dishwashing sink and we pulled out the old actually home sinks that we had in one area. So now it's up to industry standard there. We have some long-range plans that are going to involve all y'all, as well as our strategic planning when we get to that because they're going to be a little costly. So, um, but we were doing the stuff we can do with our program budget as is. Um, and then, uh, an increase in professional development offerings. As I said, one of the things we track is how much professional development our staff has. That is because in CTE, we need people to be up to current industry, um, standards. And if they don't know what's happening in the industry, they cannot do that. So, uh, we have really increased our professional development offerings, um, year over year. And then, um, we've decreased the amount of people who are on a conditional Plan Two, um, certification, uh, plan for CTE than what we had when I started as well. So, um, we also, a couple of fun things, we moved Bearcat Academy and some of our science classes over to CTE funding because we had equivalencies or because they were teaching things that really met CTE standards. Um, and that allows us to kind of have an, a unified onboarding, um, for all students who are coming in as freshmen at the high school. And then we've increased our work-based learning and post-secondary planning. I, another like celebration, Brenda Renteria, who's not here, but is our, um, our career center specialist at the high school. The, in the state or in the state of Washington, the, uh, average, financial aid applications, um, for our district are, is about 2%. We're at 12. So, and that's all of her. And that's because we've been able to really make those partnerships and keep growing connections. And so, um, and as many of you know, because you've heard me say it before, we've also really increased our work-based learning opportunities. And we saw that through the next celebration on there, which is our trade-up event that we did last spring and will be doing again this coming spring, um, where we are partnering with local trade organizations to create, um, uh, offsite, we're at Evergreen, um, State Fairgrounds across the street. And, um, they bring in, you can see some of the pictures I put up there. We bring in, um, all a bunch of the trade, um, organizations and they are working with kids all day long, getting hands-on experience about what it'd be into that workplace. And then also getting the opportunity to make connections for actual jobs they could go into. So, um, we did that this last year for the first time, partnering with Snohomish, Sultan, and Granite Falls School Districts. And we'll be doing that again this year. Lake Stevens will be jumping on board as well because they, they were jealous. So. And that's kind of a snippet of the major accomplishments. And then, um, I would be remiss not to talk about the kids. So I, I just tried to highlight a couple of the, the big events that we had last year, including, you know, having some of our middle school students, um, using robots and actually collaborating together. Some of our culinary work, uh, there's work on our, in our student store, our students who won the Wave Award, which we're really proud of. And then, uh, uh, we have winners over at Evergreen State Fair, students who are showing up. We also had that happen in our sports med club. And there's a couple of that robotics is up there. And then the last one is, um, some of you are familiar with the work that Christian Page did up at the high school. That was actually funded through CTE because, um, our Leadership Two Program Management Class is a CTE class. And so we were able to help support that. Um, and that's been a huge win for really the whole high school. And I, I would go further and say our community as that work continues. So, um, that is a snippet of what we have done. And, um, last but not least, thank you. You guys are amazing. And I really appreciate all of your individual and your collective support, um, and our community as a whole, although I can't see all of you. Thank you. Uh, we really appreciate it. We are so excited to have a program for CT that has both community board support and leadership support. We're, we're really, really blessed and super excited about what we can do from this point on. So thank you. And I didn't put questions or quibbles because I've never used the word quibbles before, but I'm happy to take them.
Thank you for all that you do, Shannon, and that you do it with so much enthusiasm and a smile on your face always, coming in every day, for, showing up for our students. So I really appreciate this. I appreciate the detail and the celebration. And for any of you who've not had an opportunity to go and tour some of these CTE programs with Shannon, I would encourage you to do so. It is a lot of fun. The teachers are amazing. And the things that they're doing for kids are incredible. So thank you so much for coming and sharing with us today.
Thank you. All are always welcome. Sometimes they're snacks. I don't know.
Thank you, Shannon. We appreciate you so much. This is great. This is great to see the progress you guys are making and the trajectories that we have.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to agenda item, their new item.
Well, sorry, I got a question.
Sorry. Oh, I'm so sorry, James. I did not mean to cut you off. Go for it.
Just kidding. I went nowhere.
Well, welcome back. Okay, first question, uh, what's the total number of students that are participating in the CTE?
I don't have the number in front of me, um, but it is because of the, especially with the graduation, alternative graduation pathway that CTE can provide. It is, it, they're extremely popular. All freshmen take a Bearcat Academy class. So it's a, it's a pretty significant amount. The, this total number is a little bit tricky because we have a lot of semester classes and they change year to year. So I'd have to look it up for what this current year is. I don't have that on, on the top of my brain right now. Sorry.
Okay, that's okay. And then this, um, rubric or template, this is to apply to all the CTE programs?
It is, it is. It's a program-wide. So it's the entire, all five, six programs are looped into that.
So how does it work when like one program doesn't meet their 2023 goal in a certain category? And then they're behind when you go to the next year and so forth.
So that's my job. So if, if we have an area that's not growing, first of all, I have to look at why. Like if I'm looking at growth indicators, I look at the goals and I look at what the growth indicators are. Some of them are unrealistic, sometimes the way that they're written. And so I'll use an example. When I, I first got here, um, five years ago, I think, um, the, uh, the four-year plan had that we were going to pass a bond, to revise and do the whole new, and a whole new culinary arts that. That's a great idea, except there's a lot of other factors that come into play with like pass a bond. That's not a goal I can set. I can say we can work to pass a bond. That could be a goal, but I can't set that goal. That's obviously up to our voters. Um, and we, I, no one can predict a pandemic. So we have goals that were set that weren't realistic there as well. So, um, the, that's part of it. So I look at it. If it's a, if it's like a instructional goal and I'm looking, and, and most of these are pretty much like, we can provide these supports and if we don't provide those supports, what, what do it look like? A lot of them are actually on me. If I don't ensure that we're looking at facilities, if I don't ensure those things, then it's really on, it comes down to me. And I guess that's Sean's conversation with me. But the, if we are looking at them in those individual program areas and it has something to do with like, uh, we aren't seeing people going to professional development or we're not seeing this, then I might have individual conversations. I can't say that I've actually run into ones where there wasn't a reasonable reason that something wasn't being met. Most of it is, it just takes some time. So one of them, for example, uh, is talking about program alignment. That's, that's a huge one to me. Um, I want A to make sense to B and so on. And, um, when we look at alignment, if things weren't aligned, you can't just change it overnight because you have graduation requirements, you have, you have, you know, students who are earning those credits and where it might have impact. And so we have to do that really systemically. The work that you heard referenced about the professional learning communities is really helping that, but that does take time for some of those conversations to happen. So the goal is really to make sure that progress is happening. Maybe the goal isn't necessarily being met before a new goal might be set that's even higher. Um, and that's also part of what I do when I'm looking at the, the program evaluations, as well as doing that, some of the feedback I get from our, our comprehensive local needs assessment, um, folks and RGIC. Does that answer your question?
A bit, yeah.
Okay.
And it had, so how often is this updated, the four-year plan?
The four-year plan is updated every year at this time.
Okay. That makes sense. Thanks. All right, Jeremiah.
Anybody else, just before Shannon walks away? All right. Thank you so much, Shannon. That was very informative.
Thank you.
Now we will move on to agenda item 2.04, which would be our fourth presentation that Molly has added to that, which you have, Director Barnes, go for it.
Okay. So at the end of the last board meeting in my comments, I talked to you about Kindness Week and how it was something that I had been working on and talking with, um, other elected officials about doing. So in between that one and this one, I have come up with a Kindness Week resolution that I am hoping, this is just a draft, right? This is the first resolution I've ever written, had to go based off of other resolutions. But it was a fun experience. So with this one, it should be on board docs for you to look at and you can just sort of follow along. I'll read out loud sort of what I've put in here. Resolution declaring the second week in November, Kindness Week for the Monroe School District. The reason it's the second week is because World Kindness Day. The reason it's the second week is because World Kindness Day generally falls within the second week of November. This week it happens to be the first day of the week. So it says, resolution is whereas, World Kindness Day is an international holiday that was formed in 1998 to promote kindness throughout the world. And whereas this presents us with the opportunity to reflect upon and model one of the most important and unifying human principles. And whereas both large and small acts of kindness have the potential to promote and diffuse this crucial quality that brings people of every kind together. And whereas the Monroe School District seeks to highlight the good deeds in our schools and focus on the positive influence and common thread of kindness which binds us all together and helps promote a feeling of belonging. And therefore be it resolved that the Monroe School District in Monroe, Washington, to proclaim the second week in November, Kindness Week, joining together with our community to build a kinder and more compassionate school district where everyone feels at home and everyone feels they belong. The resolution number on there, it was just sort of going based off of the last one, didn't really know how those worked. But I guess this would be resolution number 11 of 2023. And then under the adopted portion, I put in the ninth day of October because I'm hoping that the next board meeting, we can have this on as a business item and actually pass this. At the end of the therefore be it resolved paragraph, I went with the City of Monroe's Imagine Statement where everyone feels at home and everyone feels they belong. Because in looking at partnering with the City of Monroe, I wanted to make things a little bit more easy. I wanted the language to be the same across both of those. And so that's why I went ahead and chose that specific language. Originally, I was thinking where everyone feels that they belong, but in looking at it further and talking with a few individuals at the city, I, we put our heads together and came up with that. So I have sent this off to Sam Low. He's going to be seeing what he can do with this. And then I also have a contact for the Sultan City Council, who's going to be bringing this before the Sultan City Council to see if we can get this adopted in Sultan as well. Not only on City Council, but also a school district. And then I have another contact with the North Shore School District that will be bringing this before the North Shore School District tomorrow evening at their board meeting to see if this is something that they would get on board with as well and pass. So as time continues to go, this continues to grow and it's really exciting to see this happen. Because I think we can never have too much kindness in this world. And especially when we get everybody together to model it for our students that they get to see what that looks like. So open to suggestions, questions, anything that you've got.
Is this something that would be sort of like a proclamation? I think of the, of the items that the City of Monroe, in their newsletter, they have a proclamation. Is this, how would this be used for the Monroe School District or?
Kind of like that, but right, when we adopted and became a Purple Heart District, that's going forward indefinitely. So this is one of those, this is a resolution going forward indefinitely. Until something gets changed, that the second week in November would be Kindness Week for the Monroe School District. So a little bit different, I think.
What would you hope to accomplish with this?
My hope in doing this is building bridges, unifying, bringing people together, reminding people of the common thread that unites us. Because in the past few years, there has been so much division, there has been so much just tearing apart of communities, families, all sorts of things. And my hope and goal with this is for us to come back together and realize that we're all human beings. We all deserve kindness, respect, human dignity, and that it's, it's a small act, it's a small thing to do that can create such big waves and change lives. I mean, it really is. And I think it's an amazing way to help people within our community and our school district feel like they belong and that they're a part of something even bigger than themselves. Right? So I think unity though is, is one of the big things with that and just bringing kindness back.
Well, it's something that I, I would support.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. I don't have any qualms. I can see how it can kick off, hopefully, you know, pay it forward trends or, you know, more higher percentage of volunteering that we can have some positive effect on the community.
And what's exciting for me is that this is a way we can take action as a board, but this can't be a, a top-down thing, but where we can give the freedom to our building administrators and our teachers to say, hey, this is a direction we want to go as a school district. I don't know anybody who doesn't want to get behind kindness. Like that's just ludicrous. But it's a way that we can be intentional and unified in that process of saying, and it, it's still towards the beginning of the school year, we're still kind of at the end of first quarter or beginning of second quarter. And, but it allows us to really begin to, I think, push some of the, the data that we're also trying to look at when we look at our panorama data and the belonging data as well. That when kids have that ownership and they, they support one another, they just do better, they do better socially, emotionally, they do better academically. And that is what we're, we're about. And I think that this goes so much deeper than just we want to be kind. This is, this is what, I mean, the term DEI, I think, gets hijacked a lot of times and thrown around, but that's exactly what this is. This is where we do create an inclusive environment. This is what we're talking about with our UW presentation as well, where students feel like, hey, this is where we belong. And so the fact that, you know, this is something our city is doing, we can do this in solidarity with our city. This is something that our county is looking at. This is something that our neighboring districts on either side of us are looking at as well. I think is, is really powerful, but I would love to see how our teachers can take and run with this, that they, they take ownership of this as well. That this becomes not just a thing that we just say as a board and it goes on, but it's actually a way to help fuel fire for them. And because that's what's going to have a lasting impact is in the classrooms. All right. Thank you, Molly. And then that looks like we'll probably put that on our business item for our next meeting. Moving on to section three, communications. Laura, you've been waiting. Student Representatives Reports. Since Sophia's not here, I don't know if she got you any information, but we would love to hear an update from you.
I did not get any information from Sophia, but last week was the first week of classes at Sky Valley. And they went, it went great. I love seeing everybody and being back on campus. And yeah, thriving.
Do you guys have any questions for Laura? I have a question for you. So with, with Sky Valley's first day as well, it was first day K-12, right? Everybody coming back? All right. What were some things that went really well starting back for school? And what were some things that you were like, oh man, these, like, I don't know if it was kids coming back nervous or anything like that of just saying, we could have done this better?
Um, I think there was like people outside like greeting everyone and like, it was just really fun to be back, but yeah, I genuinely don't think there's anything that really went bad. I think it went like, I wasn't there. I wasn't, I don't know. I didn't notice anything that went bad, but everybody just, just looked so happy to be back. And all the students were just like asking, like if they didn't know where their classes were, they were just like, hey, do you know where this class is? And everyone was just, I don't know. It was just like, there's really good community at Sky Valley.
Yeah. Yeah, that's awesome. Very cool. What's one thing you're super excited about for the school year then, now that you're back and getting into the swing of things?
Just being back. I don't know.
That's all right. That's right. Awesome. Thank you so much, Laura. Appreciate that.
What, what about this new class that you were going to tell us about?
Oh, yes. Dr. Mind Control. It's great. It's, we're only in the second class. The teacher, the teacher's back there. He's great. But basically, it's just so far, we're just like talking about ways people can be like tricked or deceived or whatever. And yeah, seems like it'll be a great class.
Is this a semester or a year-long class?
Year-long.
All right. So you have to give us updates along the way. Okay?
I will.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Laura. All right. That moves us on to agenda item 3.02, our public comments section. I believe we have three, four, right? Four public comments. Public comment forums received after the meeting has started will be saved for the following meeting. We welcome and value public comment on educational issues and recognize the importance of the opportunity for members of the public to express their thoughts to the school board. It is the policy of the Monroe School District to promote mutual respect, civility and orderly conduct among district employees, parents and the public. We kindly ask that you refrain from comments that violate school district policy. Individuals are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. A designated speaker for a group is asked to keep their comments to five minutes. If you have a personnel concern, any staff member in the room can help with how to go forward with a complaint about personnel. The board does not respond to public comments during the business meeting. Please note that the board's silence is neutral. It is neither a signal of agreement nor disagreement with the speaker's remarks. The president or vice president, I guess in this case, may interrupt or terminate an individual statement when it is personally directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, targets a protected class or exceeds the time limit. As the board vice president, I will determine the appropriateness of all such rulings. When I call your name, please step up to the microphone. If attending the meeting virtually, please join as a panelist, allow video and unmute your microphone. And our first speaker is online. And moves to Andrew Jerome, I believe, is it? They are present, they are not present. Okay, we'll wait till the end. Jesse, can you let me know if they show up in there? Andrew, if you can hear us, if you can just let Jesse know in the waiting room, if you're there or to get set up as a panelist, that would be great. We'll move on to our second one, and that is Heather Young. Heather, please state your name for the record and your relationship to our schools.
My name is Heather Young and I'm here representing several parents who have children in special education. And I have to tell you how frustrating it was to sit through tonight's presentation. Your job as the board is policy and governance. And governance includes the structure and process for decision-making and accountability. We, I totally understand that it is more fun to thank everyone and to recognize everyone for the work that they're doing. And I don't think that that should stop. But there's a lot that was missing in what you were presented tonight around special education. And I think that the picture that you were given is not an accurate one. They stated that the goals were for engaging family early. I'm not sure how I got missed because I'm pretty active, hard mess, have two kids in special education and I'm constantly reaching out, but I haven't been engaged about any of that work. Including student voice. Again, my kids didn't have their voice included. And including every student. Hidden River is a demonstration site for this great work. And that must be why they closed the SLC at Hidden River without any conversation with the families there. Moved families who have children with the biggest difficulties in transitioning to a whole new school. There was no conversation with those families to say, maybe we should look at your IEP and update it and have you supported in your homeschool for one more year. It was, it was a fait accompli before it was even communicated to families. But it's your demonstration site for all the great work you're doing in special education. It, what you heard tonight does not line up with the experiences that many families are having. And it is your job as a board to ask the questions, to uncover what's sunshine and what's reality? What needs to be fixed? What's broken? Where do we need to invest more time or resources? Absolutely. Celebrate the wins. I will tell you, I have a great working relationship with Brett Willie. I have a great working relationship with Noah Wallace, with David Perator, with Jonathan Judy on these issues. In fact, three of the issues on the, on, on the slide were the issues that I have been pushing over the last three or four years to try to make happen for the kids in the special ed community. I didn't hear any community thanks, by the way, but good job. You cannot just take tours and be shown what they want you to see. You need to be asking some of the hard questions. As a management team in your business, if you had employees that were only ever giving you rosy reports, you know, that's, that's, that's a problem. They need to be bringing you what needs work, what they're doing on those issues, what the plan and the timeline is. But if it's always rosy, there's something wrong. You're not hearing what you need to hear in order to properly govern. And respectfully, the community needs more than thoughts and prayers. We need more than a Kindness Week. We need real action for our kids. They've talked about High School Plus, and I love High School Plus. High School Plus for every student. What does that mean? When the clubs and activities at the high school are not inclusive. So it's great to set a goal that every kid that has special ed does something beyond just the typical high school, you know, first to sixth period, whatever. But if we're not making those clubs accessible, if we're not providing transportation, how, how are we including those students? You should be asking about what the barriers to inclusion are and working to knock them down instead of patting people on the back for coming up with a slogan. Lastly, for the last several years, we have talked to the board about concerns around bullying. And I have yet to see meaningful progress made to address bullying. Until you have the bullying problem under control, you cannot have inclusion. It's a safety issue. I had a student tell my son that he was going to punch him in the face. And it was just because that student was having a bad day. My student didn't do anything to antagonize, wasn't anywhere near the student. It's a safety issue if you don't address the bullying and try to drive inclusion. So absolutely, we should be celebrating the progress and I commend you on the progress that you have made. But I need you to ask the hard questions and to show us that you are committed to doing the hard work, not just doing the touchdown dances. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Our next presentation is from Jeffrey Bennett. Jeffrey, also, if you can just please state your name and for the record and your relationship to the school district. And are you speaking on behalf of a group?
I am. Okay. And I have a point of clarification before I start. The presentation that was posted online for Board Docs on the panoramic data, is that, is that moved to a different night or should I address things on that here? Shift some of my things. Sorry.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jeffrey Bennett. I am a community member, parent. I have a son at split between Park Place and Sky Valley. And I have a daughter at Frank Wagner, who also has an IEP as part of the special education community. And one of the folks I am speaking on is my grandma who lives in the community as well. She's 94. And it kind of related better when we were talking about the belonging gap. But I did want to just let you know, in the past, our district has partnered with the Senior Center in Monroe and has done some different things. and has done some different things, including a specific, it's a generational connection project. It was done back in 2018 timeframe. And she was saying that she would really like to see that type of interaction again. It was really meaningful to her and she's believed it was meaningful for the students. And I spoke to the executive director Jacob and the head of programs candidates at the senior center, and they are well, they welcome any type of collaboration with the school district. And they're would be happy to have the school district reach out. They did mention that the school district's policies and procedures and forms and volunteering is quite tedious, especially for the seniors at the center. So that in the past, they found activities that can happen at the center are more successful than trying to move seniors to the schools. So and then the data that was presented tonight was, I would say, almost as troubling as some of the data that's in that panorama information to with where our, our, our students are at. And I really appreciate Director Whitfield's question on, you know, should we be shooting at the middle or should we be shooting to be high achievers? And I, we, we have high expectations as one of our key aspects. And I, I've seen a tendency both in the goals that on the thing that's going to be in, in October and the goals that were presented tonight, where the high expectations aren't part of our goals. When I was on the wrestling team, I was one of the slowest runners. We had to run a lot in wrestling. I did not expect that when I joined wrestling. And I became one of the fastest runners. And what it was, was I, I kept looking for that, the next group that was ahead of kind of the group I was in, and I kept trying to run faster and faster until I got to that next group. And sometimes I was out on my own, but eventually I kept up pace to that next group and then I, I moved forward. So if we have high expectations, I encourage you as a board not to look to be at the mean. Let's look at the, let's look at the standard deviation curve. Let's look and be at least a standard deviation above the mean. Look at what schools are in that cluster and find a way to compare ourselves to that. And then let's look and dive into the data to find out, is it, is it all of reading? Or is there certain components in our reading program that we need to address that are causing us to do that? And I think one of the ways we need to do that is with more community groups and committees. I think if you just had an overall, all district advisory committee on these types of, of matters to sit and include multiple opinions from multiple backgrounds, multiple perspectives that we would find solutions together. And I, I look at the University of Washington presentation, and one of the things they talked about is that they pulled community members and people with different backgrounds in. When we heard the CTE presentation, they have multiple advisory committees with different backgrounds. And as we look forward for a strategic plan, I really encourage us to do that is, is have the board set a committee to work with the district staff on these matters. Get the perspectives. We talked about targeting the, the gaps, the, with, with communities. You need to have those communities talking in, in, in the room because it's not the color of someone's skin or their national origin that is affecting their performance. It are, it, there are barriers that maybe that, that, that based on background, language, home situations that might be common in some of those things, but also might be affecting folks who are not in some of those minority groups. And if we can you look at universal accessibility, then we can really make things better for not just small target groups, but for all of our students. One way I always look at the universal accessibility when it was first explained to me is a ramp for someone with a wheelchair over a large curb. It's not just helpful for the person with a wheelchair. It probably keeps a lot of people a lot of people who don't need, who could step up would still prefer to take a, a ramp if it's available because it just, it's easier for all. But it's essential for those who might have an additional disadvantage. And so we need to look at ways we can be universally accessible as a, as a district. And then finally, I just wanted, it would have worked a lot better with the other data, but I really wanted to get back. Barnes is kindness week. If we look, when, when that data gets presented in October, which will be after your, your presentation on, on the kindness is there, but the respect was one of our areas of biggest decrease, and it was a very low area in both the elementary and the middle school areas and respect is a, a cognitive processing of the way they're being treated by others. And so if they are being kind to each other, that will improve the, the respect, which will improve the other areas. And I think we really need to strive for that, not just on kindness week, but maybe long term for the district as a culture. Appreciate the director, board of directors' time. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Our next public comment is Crystal Blakely. Crystal, also just please state your name for the record and your relationship to the Monroe School District.
I'm Crystal Blakely. I'm a parent in the district. So I have a middle schooler at Park Place Middle School. So today I attended the principal's chat. And it was the best attended principal's chat that they've had at the school in a decent amount of time, probably since pre-COVID. And I just wanted to thank all of the parents who showed up to be at that. It's sometimes hard to fit a nine o'clock meeting into a workday. And so to remind parents, so Principal Willie had one last week on Zoom. And then Hilsen had one today at Park Place. And so just to remind parents to keep their eyes out that those are coming out. I don't know if they're offered at Hidden River, but I would hope that we as a district offer them at every school. And that's the same thing with this kindness week. Yes, you can let the teachers and the schools kind of go out and do their own thing, but as an inclusionary thing, try and keep the schools so that everything is being offered at all schools. And some schools aren't offering more than others. And so that was just kind of same thing. Park Place offers a concern card for students to turn in for harassment and bullying issues. But again, is that offered at every school? So just keeping that in mind that with the strategic plan, we're trying to look at things as a district as a whole. So keeping those ideas in mind that we're offering the same things at all of our schools and including all of our kids.
Crystal. All right, Jesse, did Andrew come? Okay. All right, that is all. Okay. I have it. I can re, he has a comment on here. Yeah, I'll go ahead and read it. Yeah. Okay. Okay. Well, Andrew, if you're watching, we'll read your comments here because I have that, we have that here as well. So Andrew Jerome comments say, as an avid runner and parent of a child at Tenny Maltby Elementary, I enjoy running and walking around tracks. It provides a safe and convenient location for running workouts without having to worry about uneven ground trail conditions, having heavy traffic, et cetera. It also makes it easy to let my kids run around with me. I have lived several places across the USA and all other communities have made their tracks open to the community during non-school hours and during non-scheduled events. Several other school districts in the area, including North Shore and Stahomish have similar policy, but I noticed Monroe keeps the gates both to the middle school and high school tracks locked and inaccessible to the community. As an individual, I do not have the funds or needs to rent out the facility. I would just like the ability to run at the track before or after work once every now and again. Thank you for your comments, Andrew. And that concludes our public comments. Moving on to agenda item four, there is no business tonight for actionable items. And so that moves us on to our consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I moved at the Monroe School District Board of Directors, approve all items as listed and presented in the consent agenda dated September 25th, 2023.
Second, there's a mo- motion in a second to approve that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve all items as listed and presented in the consent agenda. It is September 5th, 2023. All in favor, raise your hand. I have passes four to zero. Moving on to the superintendent update.
All right, you'll be glad to know it's kind of short. So just two quick items. At our next board meeting, we have our scheduled work session and President Bumpus and I talked today and thought we could have a work session at one of our schools to begin the process of going through our big study and survey regarding our facilities. So we were thinking, we're not sure which school yet, but go to one, maybe start about 15 minutes early, start at 3:45 instead of four to give us time to do a brief overview of what is in this binder for that particular site that we visit. And then do a tour of the facility to look at what we're seeing. So to look at the, all the major systems in the school, any safety and security issues, et cetera. The hope is by the end of April, I think that we could visit each one of our school sites as well as the Wagner Center, facilities, transportation, et cetera. And then that'll give you a good idea beyond what you're reading about. You can actually see it as board members. And that will allow you to have some pretty darn good conversations tied to your board goal around what are the next steps? And at, at that point, I think you'll, you'll know whether or not you want to authorize us to pull together a community advisory committee to help us determine how to fund the projects in what order, along with a timeline. So we will start that at our, our next board meeting. We are also scheduling two meetings to get input regarding our strategic plan on October 17th and the 19th. One in at Hidden River or Maltby Elementary, I think Hidden River. Pretty sure I'm looking at Erin and she's like, well, I'm not sure if we discussed that, but I think Hidden River in the south end of our district, one of the two schools, and then at Monroe High School. So we hope those will be well attended. We'll be inviting our community via postcards. So every post office box will be invited. Hopefully we'll get a decent turnout. The postcards will also have a QR code, which will allow people to give feedback via an online survey as well, a thought exchange type of a survey. So more to come on that. And I do want to thank everyone who presented tonight. Kim and Jennifer, it was kind of a heavy lift to present all that data to you this evening. There's a lot for you to, to digest and chew on for sure. I know there's a, a big interest from you all that was discussed at our August retreat together that you, you don't want to just focus on academic achievement data, but also growth data. So that's why we had both of those in there. The district leadership team will be grappling with that data and then, and just reams of other data related to school district improvement. Tomorrow, one of our specific activities, and we'll spend a couple hours on this as a district leadership team, will be to answer a couple of questions as related to some of that data. And Kim went over some of, some of that. But essentially, here's what we're really looking at. What parts of the data catch our attention? Just the facts, really creating some narrative statements around what are we seeing? The second thing is what, what, what should we be celebrating? Certainly, even with data that you're, you're not seeing the trend lines going where you want the, the trend lines to go. And that's a steady upward trajectory. There's some things to celebrate for sure. The third step would be, what does the data really tell us? Are there some inferences that we can make? What doesn't the data tell us? I think there's a lot of things missing in the data as well. What conclusions can we draw about the data? And then why are, why are we, what, what do we think is really going on? Why is the data looking like this? Again, just drawing inferences, making conclusions, et cetera. And the fourth step is just to take a look at those inferences and those conclusions that we are drawing and then try to determine, is there a problem that, that if solved would increase student learning in the area being studied? So what, what is the real issue? What is the real problem? What is really going on? What do we need to solve? Once we, and there'll be a, probably a whole myriad of things that we'll be looking at. And then go through this root cause analysis process to make sure that our strategies are aligned with those things that will help us best solve those problem and problems as quickly as we can. There are two things, and Chuck, you asked a really good question of, of me. There's two things that we will absolutely focus on. One is we need to look within our own district because if we unpack that data and we look in every single classroom district wide, the, the answers are within our own school district. There, there are classrooms in our district that are having data that's like this, right? Both from a growth and achievement data. This is my sixth school district. Every district that I've done this work in, you can find exemplary, you can find bright spots, right? And then the trick is just trying to scale that data. I will also say that when we find the classrooms that are getting maybe higher achievement and quicker growth and smaller gaps between our various demographic groups, we can predict what they're doing because we know what works. But we'll still do the work, find our bright spots and figure out how to, 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 to scale that practice. I, I don't believe it's rocket science, but I do believe it's fairly complex. The one thing that wasn't said tonight that we are going to do as a system is create build out systems. I think one of our people spoke, I think Crystal spoke about it tonight. There are some things that we need to insist are happening everywhere across this, the district because they work and, and support our staffs and help build their capacity so they can pull it off. Our staff want to have kids attending school. Our staff wants all kids to feel welcome and like they belong. They want high levels of, of achievement and high levels of growth. It, it doesn't mean that they have the capacity to do so. We all, we need to make sure that we fine tune our system to make sure our staff have the tools that they need. One of the things that may have been lacking, and again, there's been some leadership churn here, and that's, that's the way it is. We, we're hoping to get some consistency here where we can start building out systems to support all kids. So with that said, a, a lot of exciting work. I, I hear some gentlemen spoke tonight that I met last time about wanting to be involved. Please come. If, if community members are listening or anybody here, if you, if, if you, if you want to be thought partners with the district, schedule a meeting, call Holly, she'll put you on my calendar. We'd love it. We believe that from a academic standpoint, that work is really being done tomorrow, every day during the workday. We believe we have the skills and the knowledge and the background to solve some of those problems. When we're looking at attendance and we're looking at increasing belonging and welcoming environment, we believe there's a lot of expertise that we need to draw on out from our families. Families come in and talk to us about why your kids aren't attending school. Talk to us, what are your kids telling you when they come home as to whether or not they feel like they're having good days? They're being picked on, or do you belong to a group? There's, there's some different dynamics that we're going to do when it comes to trying to solve those issues that we face. Jeremiah, you said it really well. We must focus on things outside of just traditional academics. That's why, for, I think it's the first time in this district that we're going to set district goals when it comes to sense of belonging. We're going to set five-year goals there. We're going to set district goals when it comes to attendance. We believe some of the root cause happens to, of what's going on here is a lot of our kids don't feel like they belong, A, and B, a lot of kids aren't attending school. And we need to figure out why not? Does it go back to the belonging piece? Maybe, but we have a lot of legwork to do there. Sorry for the long ramble, but we're excited to get after it. Just because we're working on the strategic plan and we haven't developed it, doesn't mean we're not getting after it every day in each of these areas. I appreciate the sense of urgency that our staff is, is working from. It's, it's, I'm very impressed so far. So yeah, I'm all done. Thank you. I'll be back though in two weeks.
Thanks, Sean. All right, moving on to agenda items, 7.01 board reports and board comments.
Don't all jump at once. Okay, I will start. So first thing, got the opportunity to go to Fireland Elementary. Welcome the kids in as they came to school, walk around and visit a couple of classrooms, talk with the principal there. By the way, he says anytime doors are open, you do not need to make an appointment with him, just show up. One of the things that I really truly loved about going there were the signs and everything telling students that you belong. You're unique and that uniqueness is what makes us better. You, your diversity were like a box of crayons and your diversity brought together with the diversity of others makes a complete box. These are a lot of the things that I think make positive impacts in the days of students, especially in elementary school when we're teaching them, treat others as you want to be treated, right? And trying to create that inclusive environment of belonging. So I appreciated that. Sitting in some of the classrooms, Ms. BP's classroom, kindergarten classroom, she had a piece of paper on the desks of the students. And as I walked around and engaged with some of them, I asked them, I said, do you know what it says on this piece of paper? And they said, no. And I said, it says, I am smart. I said, and that's right, you are smart. You get to come here every day and you get to learn and grow alongside your friends. I said, that's pretty awesome. It's a bucket filler when you get to walk into a classroom of kindergarteners and just experience their excitement and wonder as they sit and they learn and grow together. So I appreciate the teachers opening up their classrooms, the conversations that I was able to have with them. And then in Ms. Gad's classroom, she did this thing at the beginning of the day that I thought was really interesting and it was called Rose and Thorn. And the students would go around and they would talk about the bad thing about the day, but they would also talk about the good thing about the day, the thing that they were excited about. And it was fun to be able to take part in that as we had that circle time and to listen to the kids and what's going well and what's not going so well. And then I had another teacher phrase it another way in that exact same school building. She says, what's your lemon and what's your lemonade? And you always end on the lemonade because the lemonade is the positive thing and it's the thing that's going to stick in your brain and that you're going to remember and that can set the tone for the rest of your day. And so I appreciated that. And the two children who were with her graciously agreed to share their lemon and their lemonade with us, which was another special experience. Another thing that I noticed while I was there at Freyland's was that the principal does a video at the start of every single day. He talks about what the date is today, what the weather looks like outside. Here's what we're serving for lunch. And here's sort of a positive affirmation for the day, right? Here's a place where you can learn and grow and it's sort of tailored for each grade level. And I thought, wow, this is something really cool. And as I dialogued more with people in the front office, they said, yeah, this is something that our our staff really loves, our parents love it. We have parents whose kids don't even go here anymore and they still turn in to watch this because it's made such a positive impact. And as I was talking with Sean, I said, Sean, this is what it looks like. These are the things that we need to be doing, picking out the things that each individual school is doing well and trying to replicate it across all schools so that we can create more unity within our school district. And so that children are having the same experiences like with the reflections of the potlatch that Salem Woods does that I feel like every elementary school needs to be doing so that our students, by the time they get to middle school are having similar experiences, especially educational experiences that are as profound as, you know, a two-day workshop on reflections of the potlatch. So I really appreciated the comment tonight as well about just making sure that we're being consistent and that we're doing things the same across our different schools so that parents know what to expect. So moving on from that, I got the opportunity to go to General Assembly, well, not physically go, but in Zoom. So that's being the WASDA legislative rep, that was the two-day WASDA legislative session essentially where we all get to chime in from the different school districts and vote on positions that WASDA will take amendments to positions, getting rid of positions, adding new positions. Just basically how we want them to advocate for us as school districts with the legislature. So one of the couple, just a couple of highlights, I'm not going to highlight everything because it was, there was 48 different things that we had to vote on over the two days. It was 16 and a half hours total. It was nine hours on Friday and it was seven and a half hours on Saturday. So I missed my last nice day outside, but it was, it was worth it to advocate for the school. So one of the big takeaways was the weighted vote. So there was a resolution that had come before the board that we chose not to sign on to. This was the very first thing on the agenda. It took an hour and a half just to pass the agenda because people were wanting to move the weighted vote to the very end of the of the agenda. And but after five and a half hours, we finally made it passed approving the agenda and the weighted vote is now gone. So every school district gets one vote, one voice. We had school districts chiming in saying that, you know, I don't need nine, 10 votes to represent my students. One vote is plenty. So moving past that, things seemed to go a little more smoothly. It was a great in-depth learning experience with Robert's rules when you have 16 and a half hours of making motions and amendments and amendments to amendments. And what this looks like, you really get to know it well. So I appreciated that fact of it. I really enjoyed listening to the perspectives of a lot of different school board directors from around the state. At the beginning of the conference, we had a rec record 154 school districts represented, which was incredible. The highest number before that, I believe, was 121 districts represented. So there are more districts than there ever have been wanting to make their districts voice heard. Another thing that I thought was really important was a new position on transitional kindergarten. So with this one, it basically said that WASDA would would work against any legislation that was going to restrict or deter a school's ability to create or maintain a transition to kindergarten program. So wanting to make sure that that funding stays in place. And then we also had a position pass for students' civil rights that are to be maintained both at a local and state level. So WASDA is going to be advocating for that as well. We had, I mean, all different sorts of things. They're going to be having, they're going to send us all a book that is going to talk about all the different things that we passed, the language that was different. Some things, it's like, okay, we're just going to change this one word in this, or we want to put in this phrase and take out this phrase. So a lot of little things like that too. And then with amendments to amendments, it's okay, let's change this word or let's change this. So there's a lot of back and forth in that. But I should be able to get a hold of that final one. So if any of you are interested in looking at it, you can. The other thing is that their list of potential WASDA positions, they're going to be sending an email out both to me and I believe to Jennifer tomorrow that has, it's a list of all of these we have until October 16th by 5:00 PM to figure out our top 10 on this list and submit that to them. So I will be bringing that to you here soon. I'll be beginning to look at that tomorrow and kind of run through that. I don't know how you want me to do that. If you want me to provide you with the entire list and you can all go through it and try to pick your top 10. If you want me to meet with Sean and try to narrow it down to maybe the top 20, depending on how big the list is, and then you can try to pick from that. So if you want to chime in on that and let me know how it is that you would like me to do that, I can definitely do that. The other thing I want to talk about is these right here. So at Sky Valley, you know, I'm looking at the different schools and going to, and you see all these things that are welcoming or that just help kids feel like they belong. Well, this is one of the routes that Sky Valley took and it says, at Sky Valley, we are all welcome, all colors, all cultures, all genders, all orientations, all beliefs, all religions, all ages, all people, all belong, be kind, you matter. And I have seen this in five different languages up at Sky Valley. And I get to see this just about everywhere that I walk within the school. And I feel like this right here, especially when you have all of your staff and everybody that get behind it, it makes a huge impact. So I'm just appreciative of Sky Valley for what they do. In that sense, I'm going to be meeting with the kindness committee that they have there on Thursday and going through some of their ideas of things and hoping to put something together that we can share with other schools of ideas of this is what kindness week could look like. These are some of the things that you can do within your schools just to sort of give them a reference so they don't have to try to go and find a bunch of things to do during that time. The other thing I want to talk about is football game this Friday. It's at 7:00 PM versus Mount Lake Terrace. I will be there for this game. We also have volleyball tomorrow night at 7:00 PM, home game versus Snohomish and planning on being there as well. I'd encourage you all to get out and support our student athletes. And then we've also got, I wanted to talk about when David was talking about unified sports and just cooperative sports. We have something here within the community that's already going that I wanted to make everybody else aware of and just highlight some of the some of the things coming up that they're doing. And it's, so Ford Lowry heads this up with the YMCA and it's called Miracle League. And some of the things that they have coming up are bowling. So they've got bowling planned for the winter of 2024. It's still within the planning stages and they don't have official material or information yet to share. But he's going to be sending that out as soon as it's finalized. They do things like swimming lessons. They do baseball. They do basketball. They do all sorts of things to make sure that students who are just differently able to are able to partake and participate in sports and do other things. So I would encourage you to check that out to find out more information on it. But also just for parents within the community to know that if you didn't know, if you have a child who's interested in that, that that is a resource that we have that is available and it's through the YMCA and Ford Lowry is the individual to contact on that one. I think that's the long of it for tonight. I'm sorry. I know my updates seem to be so long on different things, but there's it always seems like there's a lot to share. There's a lot going on. Yeah. So I hope you all have a good week.
All right. Well, thank you for that. I don't have very much. But Sean, when you do the root cause analysis, are you going to be providing the board with an update about that? Okay. Yeah, I'm very curious about that. Very much appreciate all the data being presented to us. We can really see the trends and see the positive growth that's happening and we can help set aggressive, aggressive goals as well.
Fellow board members, you do not know how cruelly that district conference is. We should be so appreciative of Molly for that. I'd recommend that you get together with Sean and come up with the priorities and then present that to the board. Then we select the top 10, but I would defer to her. The, you have never seen so many parliamentary gyrations as you would on the on those sessions, amendment to amendment and discussion for each amendment and then previously prior to the weighted vote, we would approve it and they call for the weighted vote and then it would maybe overridden. So that was a great, a great thing. And at this class reunion, I ran into a guy that lives in nearly, nearly Idaho, I think. And they have a school district of 125. So I was kind of nowhere comparing notes. And so, you know, they have other needs to larger school districts and their kids were important. And I think this weighted vote will help out smaller school districts because kids out in the hinterlands are just as important as once in downtown Seattle. It was just interesting going to another class reunion for different well, school district. I didn't know anybody, but it was fun talking to people. You know, it comes down to your health, your kids, your grandkids, your relationships. And really that's what it comes down to in terms of kind of the full circle of life. If you've, I don't know how many people here have had 30-year career careers and you get past that. With your career, you know, you're important, you're a doctor, you got this, nobody cares. They don't care about your accomplishments, but it's the the journey you've been through. Having a good life, you know, the relationships. And that, and on the teaching and learning report, we're doing a lot of things good in the school district. I visit classrooms. I've heard lots of innovative things we're doing. We've got a lot of hardworking teachers. I know everybody's tired, everybody's worn out, but he's working hard. So I just wanted to let everybody know that I appreciate that. And we will accomplish goals. We will succeed. And I have total confidence in that. So thank you for all the staff, district, that's hardworking. And that's all.
Thank you, everyone. That being said, it is 7:39 PM and this meeting is adjourned.